Board, you ready? All right. Okay. Good afternoon and welcome, everyone. Call to order, the 2:00 PM session of the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors. First order of business is invocation. Pastor Dan Woon Hope Church.
Well, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you to the members of the board for this special opportunity. Would you join me all in a moment of prayer? Good, kind, gracious, and loving God, we thank you for today, and we thank you for these moments that are still packed yet with potential to do good work on behalf of you and the people that we serve. Lord, it's my privilege to be here with these folks. Lord, I can imagine the gifts, the abilities, and the callings that you've placed upon each person. And God, for each person, I would ask your blessing, certainly in their professional worlds, but certainly their personal ones as well. God, in times that not only feel challenging, but in reality are difficult, Lord, would we seek opportunities to lean into you, but also to invite others into our journeys that we might move forward together. And so, God, with the different conversations, with the decisions that are being made, we ask for your presence to guide this process, that we would be motivated by a desire to serve and love others well, and in so doing, that we would bring forth greater life, vibrancy, and vitality to this community and beyond. So, we thank you for these moments. We pray this in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There we go. All right. The next item of agenda is the board's comments. And today, we have a very special item on our agenda. We're excited to consider approving the contract for a new Goochlin County Administrator. When we accepted John Bodeski's resignation, we began a search for a replacement. The first thing we did was we looked for and searched for a search firm. We found one, Baker Tilly. And after they, after we provided them with all of our criteria of what we were looking for, they went to work and started recruiting candidates. They found over 40 candidates for this job, quite a diverse group. After a series of exercises, including in-person interviews, resume reviews, reviews of their written questions that we gave them, videotape interviews, one person rose to the top. And after all the deliberations, we were prepared to consider Kenneth Young as our new county administrator. He has more than 25 years' experience in government and the private sector management experience, and holds the distinction of an International City County Management Association credentialed manager. He began his local government career in 1991 as a budget and management intern for the city of Las Cruces, New Mexico, while he attended graduate school. He most recently served, and I skipped 20 years there, sorry about that. He most recently served as an Assistant County Administrator for Loudoun County, where he oversaw the county community development, including Departments of Economic Development, Building and Development, Planning and Zoning, and served as the liaison to the Virginia Cooperative Extension for Loudoun County. Loudoun County, as you probably know, is one of the fastest-growing counties in the United States. Its digital infrastructure has made it a key player in the world's technology economy, which has accomplished, which was accomplished while also preserving the western portion of the county's rural character. Sound familiar to anyone here? He comes from a military family and grew up in El Paso, Texas, and earned a Bachelor of Arts in Government and a Master of Public Administration degree from New Mexico State University. He is a graduate of the Economic Development Institute, University of Oklahoma, and is a member of the International City County Management Association and the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. Mr. Young, we welcome you to Goochlin County. Would you like to come forward while we read the resolution approving your contract? What I'd like to do is read the, we'll read the resolution, which is the acceptance of the contract. We will take a vote on that, and afterwards, welcome you to make a few comments and introduce your family if you like. So, first of all, Mr. Lumpkins, would you please read the resolution?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas the position of county administrator became vacant due to the resignation of John A. Bodeski effective June 30, 2020, and whereas the Board of Supervisors initiated a nationwide recruitment process to hire a new county administrator, and whereas after a very deliberative selection process, the board has chosen Kenneth A. Young, and whereas the board now desires to appoint Mr. Young as county administrator and clerk to the board to manage and administer the affairs of the county, and whereas the board and Mr. Young have agreed to the terms of Mr. Young's employment, and the board wishes to authorize its chair to execute the employment agreement, and whereas it was agreed upon that Mr. Young's first day of employment as county administrator will be September 14, 2020. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby appoints Kenneth A. Young to serve as county administrator and clerk to the board effective September 14, 2020. The county administrator shall be vested with and exercise all the powers and duties set forth in state law and as directed by the Board of Supervisors. Be it further resolved that the board chair is hereby authorized to enter into an employment agreement with Mr. Young on terms agreed to by Mr. Young and the board, adopted this first day of September 2020 by the Board of Supervisors of Goochlin County, Virginia.
Thank you, Mr. Lumpkins, and that is a motion that we adopt.
I move that we adopt and approve the resolution.
Okay. So, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay. Mr. Stamey, if you don't mind, let's do a roll call on this one.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Spoonhauer?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Ms. Laskolet?
Yes. Welcome. The floors yours.
Thank you. Thank you to the board and to the community. You've been so welcoming to me and my family. I'm very excited about this opportunity to come and work in Goochlin and really get involved within the community on a daily basis. And I can't be thankful enough about the opportunity that's been presented to me, and the employees here at Goochlin have just been wonderful to get to know, and I'm getting, I'm ready to get to know others as well. With me today is my son Marcus. Here, next to him is my wife Cynthia for the last 25 years. I'd just like to thank them. They've been through a lot through my career, and just excited about this next opportunity to come. Not here today is my daughter Keisha, who just started as a freshman at Fordham University. So, she's had some online courses that she had to attend to today at this time. So, she hasn't been able to be with us, but she's here with us in spirit, and I actually believe she might be watching us on streaming. So, hi, Keisha.
There you go. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay. You're more than welcome. Oh, swearing in. Yes, we got to do that. Yes. Thank you. Is Ms. Agnew here? There she is. Okay. Yeah, that's a pretty important piece.
Hi, Kenneth A. Young. Do solemnly swear. That I support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And I will faithfully and impartially. Discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent upon me as county administrator. Of the county of Goochlin. Effective September 14, 2020. According to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Thank you.
Mr. Drummond, you did get a couple pictures? Okay, great. Thank you very much. I hate to leave the board meeting. I hate to leave a board meeting. Take pictures of them and Photoshop us in. Okay. All right. Thank you, guys, very much, and welcome again to Goochlin County. Also, continuing with the chair comments, I would like to mention that we do have our fall town hall scheduled. Districts 2 and 3 are Thursday, October 8, at Central High School. District 1 is Thursday, October 15, at Byrd Elementary. And districts 4 and 5 are Thursday, October 22, at Salem Baptist Church. So, these will all be posted, and we encourage everyone to join us on that. And the last item I have is next week, we will have our inaugural meeting of the Community Conversations Work Group to examine race relations in Goochlin County. And we're very grateful for all the people who've stepped up and willing to work on this project with us, and we look forward to having a great dialogue and doing a lot of listening. So, that's the chairman comments. Okay. Next are the employee service awards recognition. Mr. Stamey?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. I wanted to take an opportunity in today's board meeting to recognize our employees and their years of service. As you may recall, each September, the first board meeting in September, we recognize our employees and their length of service, whether it's 5, 10, 15, 20, and above. We recognize our employees for their years of service by having a lunch over in the Parks and Rec Building where they have their picture taken and receive their service rewards at that time. Our current pandemic is not allowing us to do that this year, so we're taking an alternative approach, which I think we're all used to being fluid and thinking of new ways to do what we've always done. But today, I'm going to actually take an opportunity and read into the record all of our employees and their areas of service and their lengths of service. And this Friday, I'll be coming around with Ms. Parrish, our HR director, to deliver lunches for everyone. In lieu of having lunch today in the Parks and Rec Building, we'll be delivering lunches, and we'll also be circulating a video of everyone who's had their photo sent in to us so that you can see for yourself and place a face with a name. So, with that, I'm going to get started. We've actually got approximately 31 staff members to be recognized today, and collectively 340 years of service to Goochlin County. That's a tremendous amount of experience, time, and talent to recognize today. And just to put that in perspective, the county, depending on who you ask, because it is still up for debate after all these years, the county was founded, according to our seal, in 1727, so you'd have to go back to 1680 just to equal the amount of years that we have in terms of service. So, we have 20 folks with five years of service, and I'm going to go by category. Amanda Adams with our Circuit Court Clerk's Office, Eric Taliaferro with our Animal Protection Office, Jeff Compton with Building Inspections, John Woodburn with Community Development. We have six folks with Fire and Rescue, Sean Daniels, David Kolinich, Robert Mills, Michael Mills Jr., Chan Rowland, and Chad St. John. Greg Atkinson and Tony Pleasance in General Services, Corey Marshall with Parks and Recreation, four folks from the Sheriff's Office, including Kelsey Amos, Stanley Carrington, Harrison Hankins, and Rory O'Shaughnessy. Emily Fisher with Social Services, Janet Fontenot with our Treasurer, and Taylor Morris with Utilities. These are all folks with five years of service. Mr. Mason Kenny with General Services has 10 years of service. Sarah Worley with our Economic Development Office has 15 years. Brenda Anthony with General Services has 15 years. Kevin Foreman with the Sheriff's Office, Kendall Tanaka with Social Services, and Donna Veo with Social Services, also with 15 years of service. We have four staff members with 25 years of service, including two constitutional officers. Jennifer Brown with Commissioner of Revenue's Office, Sheriff Creasy, and we've got two Sheriff's Office employees, Raymond Henley and Stephen Layton, with 25 years of service. So, that's an incredible amount of service, but the last person we're going to recognize today, and I actually asked her to be in attendance, Mrs. Beverly Long with Social Services, who is just a rock in that department and really a true beacon of just toughness and tenacity for the county. She has 40 years of service that she's dedicated to Goochlin County. And we have some flowers for you from your staff, if you'd like to come up and get those. Flowers for 40. Thank you, Ms. Long.
Yeah, that's the first 40 years, right? Congratulations to all of our staff. Okay. So, you're still on. Mr. Stamey is now interim county administrator comments.
Yep. Trying to get myself organized here.
Yes, sir.
A couple of comments from interim county administrator comments. I wanted to share some news with the board and our residents and our staff. For the sixth straight year, the county has been recognized by the Government Financial Officers Association with their Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The recognition is due to the collective work of our staff on the comprehensive annual financial report, lovingly known to most of us as the CAFER. And the recognition of a CAFER rewards our efforts to provide transparency and accountability in our reporting to our residents and taxpayers, and is often described as a demonstration of the spirit of full disclosure. And the CAFER requires a heavy lift by county staff and our constitutional officers, including the Treasurer's Office, our Commissioner of Revenue, our School Division's Finance Office, our Department of Social Services, and our Financial Services Department. Just a huge thank you to our collective team on their work for the CAFER and bringing home that award for us this year, and especially to Mrs. Horlacher, our financial guru, who spearheaded the effort. So, congratulations.
Yes.
Next thing on the list, this Friday, or I'm sorry, Friday from now, we're going to be having two September 11 remembrance services at two fire stations within the county. At 9:45 on Friday, the 11th, at Company, 9:45 in the morning, Company 5 will be having a remembrance event there at the fire station, and Company 1 will have a remembrance service at 7:00 PM that night as well. I urge anyone who hasn't, or if you have attended these remembrance services, to please do so. It is amazing, it's an amazingly moving ceremony that our first responders work together to produce for our county in remembrance of all those fallen individuals who ran into buildings and risked their lives back on September 11. So, if you have the opportunity to go to that, I would strongly recommend it. And I thank the chief and his folks in the sheriff's office for working together to remember folks that definitely deserve it and to bring it to our community. And lastly, I'm going to wrap it up with this. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the Board of Supervisors to be able to serve you all for the last 60 days in this capacity. Pandemics, hurricanes, daily operations of government, it's truly been a whirlwind, but it's been very gratifying. It's been one of the most interesting times for me professionally, and it's reinforced a couple of things. It's reinforced to me what a great board, a great supportive board we have. I think it's really reiterated to me how engaged and how much our citizens care about their local government. And on top of everything, it really reiterated to me how talented a group of constitutional officers and staff we have in this county, because we all do this lift together. And that's what makes Goochlin a great place to live, work, and ultimately, we're a family. And with that, I wanted to personally say to Mr. Young that I'm looking forward to our family welcoming you and your family to Goochlin County, and I'm really looking forward to working with you and continuing that upward trajectory that Goochlin has sustained over the last several years. So, thank you, board. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Stamey. It was very nice. Appreciate it. Okay. The next item on the agenda is request to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation. Board, do we have any?
We have one item on the consent agenda.
Right.
Yeah, we had, there's a request to sell a K-9 dog to Deputy Greg Vock, who is leading the department on September 13. So, I asked that we add that to the consent agenda.
Okay. So, that will be item nine on the consent agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Any other, any other changes, board? Okay. All right. So, that's set. Next item on our agenda that is in comment period, as usual, if you please come forward, give us your name, your address. Please try to keep your comments to about three minutes. Welcome, anyone?
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Robin Lynn. I'm Secretary of the Goochlin County Electoral Board. And pardon me, while I try to get some glasses, but I can read. I just want to give this to Mr. Young. Have some homework to do before we start. Madam Chair, if I might point out, although some people believe I was here in 1727, that is not the case. In fact, 45 years ago, I left Loudoun County because the population had grown to 32,000 people, and I thought that the county couldn't get any bigger, and so I must leave to create a vacancy. They now grow by more than 32,000 people every year. We're delighted to have Mr. Young bring his expertise to join us. Here I am to provide you with information about the elections upstate. And first, I'd like to report that for absentee voter applications, we now have today 2,154 applications in Goochlin County. That is 11% of our active voters. We, in our neighboring communities, Lewisah has 2,344, which is 9%. Hanover has 7,127, which is also 9%, and Powhatan has 1,305.7%. We are on track, I believe, to hit probably 20% at least if we consider in-person absentee voting that will start on September 18. And just to note, it's probably the same in Loudoun, but I don't have those figures. Fairfax County has more than 100,000 absentee applications already received as of last Thursday. This is a stunning change for voters across the Commonwealth. I list some important dates here for you all, just to keep in mind, the deadlines coming up, and then current changes that are in effect now as of July 1. Photo ID is no longer required, but a personal ID is required. We expect most people will still show their driver's licenses because they can be scanned, and that will immediately bring up their identification on the electronic poll books. But an ID that does not have a photograph on it is still acceptable. There is no excuse needed for absentee voting anymore. And in fact, absentee balloting is now referred to by the Department of Elections as vote by mail rather than absentee voting. Polling places will be regulated in the November 3 general election for social distancing, and face coverings will be required per county guidance. No mask, no entry. However, voters who decline or who are unable to wear a mask will be asked to vote curbside, and we'll have signage outside every polling place asking, please call inside to the chief, and we will bring a ballot out to that voter. We will not discourage anyone from voting. Blair Precinct will be relocated to St. Mary's Episcopal Church from Collegiate Athletic Facility when collegiate realized they could not guarantee they would be able to provide their services to us. They'll become a backup location. And it's very possible that Haydensville will be relocated to Company 6 at the request of their Board of Trustees. We're still negotiating with them. We'll have an answer, I hope, tonight. On the backside of the handout that I gave you is the proposed language that's been considered by the House and Senate. There is one line that's been added in the House bill, otherwise they're identical. So, they have to wait for the Senate to agree to the House line before it can go to the governor. The governor is expected to sign it. I had word this morning from Delegate Marcus Simon that they will have it on the governor's desk on or before Friday. When that happens, there'll be several other changes for us, and we will be required to follow guidance issued by the Department of Elections, which has not yet been issued. So, we don't know exactly how it will work. But first, all of the absentee ballot applications will be answered with ballots sent out with postage-paid return envelopes. And the state has put an additional $2 million into the elections budget so that localities will be reimbursed for this. When Ryan goes down to pick up the ballots, we'll pay for them. We'll keep a tab. At the end of the election process, we'll submit a bill to the Department of Elections and hope to get reimbursed, 100%, but very close to it. The other issue that's come up is the issue of drop boxes, which are now referred to as ballot drop locations. To encourage the safety or to provide for the safety of voters, and particularly for officers of election, voters will be permitted to return their ballots, their absentee ballots or their mail-in ballots, to a drop-off location. We will have one at the registrar's office, and we may have one, depending upon the requirements of the bill, at local schools. We're thinking of Byrd High School and Randolph to provide those three additional locations. That is still very much up in the air. Dr. Rayly has very kindly said the school board would do everything they could to assist us with this. This would be for the period of 45 days, voting starting on September 18, to allow people who are worried about the COVID-19 to bring their ballots in and drop them off in a secure location that is under surveillance and under observation. On Election Day, we will also be required, under this language, to have a drop-off box at each polling location to allow a voter to come in and just deposit the absentee ballot, the mail-in ballot, and leave without going in and talking to the officers of election or the chief or anybody else. And those ballots would then be added to the ballots collected at the end of the day. Any ballot that is mailed in, that is received by Friday noon following Election Day with a postmark of Election Day or before, is to be counted. So, our canvas, final canvas, will be delayed until at least Friday, 6. That's a change. All of these changes are for this election only. It's being put in as a supplemental budget bill, and further legislation in January, February, we'll probably be required to make it permanent if they decide it is to be permanent. Our registrar is here with me, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of these upcoming changes.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Any questions on elections? Okay. You got off easy. Thank you. Thank you very much.
If I might, Madam Chair, say, this is the first time, to my knowledge, we have a member of the Board of Supervisors who, in fact, is a former officer of election, and I would suggest you direct all of your questions to Mr. Sharp, who will be able to answer them.
Boy, just threw you under the bus. There you go. Boy, just threw you under the bus, there you go. All right, thank you, very informative, really appreciate it, Mr. Lynn. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, members of the Board, Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannakin Road. These have been some eventful couple of weeks, and there are a lot of things that have happened in Goochlin I could comment on. But I have been fortunate to have a mentor who counseled me that most folks can find something to complain about if they look for it, but more importantly, we can also find something to be grateful for if we take a moment to look for it. So I'm going to take an opportunity today just to comment on some of the good things that I've experienced, and I believe all of us have experienced, whether we recognize it or not, here in Goochlin. I'll leave the complaints for another speaker, or maybe for myself at another time. I want to take a moment and say that I appreciate the emphasis this Board has put on goals and outcomes. Every item that you look at has a checkbox identifying the governing strategic goal that you're looking for, and what it's intended to address. And I want to appreciate you for sticking with goals and outcomes, and not necessarily seat of the pants what is the outcome du jour that you're looking for. I appreciate the fiscal management that this Board and others preceding have put in place. You look at the revenue and the expense side. I hope the county hits its trifecta, Mr. Peterson, and gets its third AAA bond rating. But even in the midst of these unprecedented times, I appreciate that Ms. Horlocker particularly has put in yeoman hours revising the budget numerous times, and my prediction is she will do so again several more times this month or next. Good policy requires good implementation, and I appreciate the staff that Goochlin has assembled. We've just witnessed and listened to people who have put in many, many hours, and here I'm screwing up because the light just went off, that they have put in. You can't implement good policy without good staff. I appreciate the first responders we have here, I'm really going to go fast here. I appreciate Goochlin Cares, that is a private entity. It is not people sitting around saying, "Let's let government solve the problem." It is people saying, "Let's take care of ourselves." I appreciate the dialogue and the communication we have in this community. I have benefited from someone taking time to sit with me for hours, imagine that, hours, to share various perspectives. And while I may not always fully comprehend the perspective, I have certainly appreciated and grown from that. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Ms. Bess Kaywitz managing opportunities for citizens to share comments with the Board. So, is there room for change in the county? Are there things we could complain about? Yes, there are, but I'm going to let those opportunities happen at another time, and I'll see you folks at 6.
Is that when it's going to happen? All right, thank you, Mr. Lyle. Do we have anyone else? Mr. Alvarez?
Hello, Board members, thank you for allowing me to speak and for, especially, I want to thank you for your diligence in selecting our next county administrator that I think is going to take us to yet another level. I really appreciate it, I want to welcome Mr. Young and his family, and offer my help if I can in any way. And Derek, great job during the interim, I think you did a great job, and we'll continue to get better as we move forward. Thank you for everything you've done during the shutdown, during the epidemic. It's amazing that we're still holding our own and doing much better than anyone in the, in the region. So with that, I'll let you all have, start your long meeting today.
You have more time, Mr. Alvarez? All right, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, one, two, three, all right, seeing none, close to citizen comment period. Next item of business is minutes approval. And we have three sets of minutes to approve today, July 7th, 28th, and August 14th. I'm assuming the Board's read the meeting minutes? Are there any corrections or amendments to be made? Seeing none, may we have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes as presented. Second.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, any other comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, no, okay, motion passes, minutes are approved. All right, we'll get to the reports section. VDOT is up first, I see Mr. Lynn in the audience. Thank you for being here today.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Marshall Wynn with VDOT. Know you all have a copy of the maintenance report. We had 116 work orders this past month, completed 113 of those, had 16 after-hour call-outs this past month. We're working on our third cycle of primary mow, should be complete this week, and once we complete that, next week we'll start on the secondary mowing cycle. Probably as you've seen, some of our speed studies have been postponed due to the reduced traffic, due to the pandemic and COVID. The big-ticket item, in my opinion, is the 288-250 project. They're moving along real, real fast, and that will be completed sometime in October. So, that'll be one checked off the box for everybody.
Wow.
Only other thing I wanted to bring up is about our crews, what we're doing during this period with COVID. Our crews are working split shifts. One crew comes in at 6:30 in the morning, the other crew comes in at 7:30, and then they go out to work. I don't think, you probably haven't seen any difference in the work and everything out there. The big difference is the residency. Most of us are teleworking, and I hate that with a passion, but most of the time I do come in, get in a truck and check things out and that sort of thing. And just want everybody to know, if you need anything, just give me a call or email me. So, other than that, if you all have any questions, I'll be glad to take them on.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lynn, great report, and thanks for your comments. Board, any, Mr. Spoon Howard?
So, Mr. Lynn, thank you so much for, I think Mill Forest is probably a large volume of those calls that you received. Yeah, for those of you unaware, Mill Forest did get a new seal put down, but it doesn't hold up very well. It hasn't really had a good chance to seal, and in speaking with the contractor that put it down, it's not really something for over 90-degree temperatures, which it looks great on the straightaways, but anytime anything big turns, it tears up that cape seal. So, I don't know if that's something that you don't want us to look at as far as, you know, how feasible is that product? He did say that they would probably be coming back when the weather cools, and, but you guys picked up the phone every time I called, which is nice, so I appreciate that.
Finally got that driveway straight.
Finally got the driveway straight. And they were, the homeowners were very satisfied, so thank you.
I think after the third time, they, they got it right.
Yeah.
Third time's a charm. All right, thank you, Mr. Spoon Howard, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Lynn, appreciate all your help. All right, next item is introduction of new county staff, Ms. Parrish.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, I'm Kelly Parrish, Director of Human Resources, and what an exciting day. And I have even more good news ahead. It is my honor to introduce new staff in our fire EMS department. Due to, due to new positions, three new firefighter EMTs joined the fire rescue staff on August 17th, 2020. Thomas Dillingham, would you please stand? Thomas comes to us after having served as a volunteer for Hanover County. Welcome, Thomas. Thank you. Morgan Kingston, would you please stand? Morgan joins us as a paramedic after being a 911 dispatcher for Powhatan County, and a firefighter EMT for both Hampton and Petersburg Fire and Rescue. Welcome.
Welcome.
And David Morris, would you please stand? David joins us after most recently serving as an EMT with the UVA Health System, and as an active member of the Rutgersville Volunteer Fire Company. Welcome to you all, thank you.
Okay, welcome.
That is all, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Parrish. The next two reports are in the packets, Planning and Development Activity and Accounts Payable. We do have staff here if there are any questions, but no presentation to speak of. Okay, all right, moving right along. Next item is the consent agenda. Remember, we added item number nine to that, which we will get over. Mr. Stamen, would you like to run through the consent agenda for us?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. We have nine items for your consideration this afternoon as it pertains to your consent agenda. Our first item is a request to authorize the interim county administrator to execute two performance agreements between Greenswell Growers, the Goochlin County Economic Development Authority, and Goochlin County to provide financial incentives to develop a hydroponic facility in the eastern end of the county. Greenswell has secured an AFID grant from the Commonwealth and is committed to and will be required to meet minimum job and investment thresholds. These thresholds must be met before any grant monies are paid to the company. Details related to the investment thresholds can be found on page 81 of your packet. The agreement has been signed by Greenswell, and the EDA has authorized its chair to execute the final agreement if it's approved by the Board today. Your next item on consent agenda is a request to refer to the Planning Commission an amendment to Chapter 6 of the county's 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The amendment is requested in order to update and amend the existing Parks and Rec Plan. As you may be aware, the, the existing Parks and Rec Plan is set to expire in 2020, and instead of re-visiting that process, now we wanted to wait and amend the existing plan in an effort to update how many facilities we've completed, update our level of services, and extend that plan's useful life so that we can dovetail it with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan in the next couple of years. The third item for consideration is a, is a request to set a public hearing related to an ordinance amendment to the county's special event ordinance. The proposed ordinance amendment will seek to provide clarity on a multitude of items associated with the terminology of the event ordinance, as well as to streamline the process of the event application. All county departments who assist with this process, as well as organizations who have recently obtained permits, have been engaged as part of this evaluation process. The fourth item for consideration is a request to set a public hearing to consider a proposed ordinance amendment to the county's parade ordinance. This proposed ordinance amendment would repeal the current parade and procession ordinance and replace it with an ordinance aimed at improving its standards, as well as streamlining that permitting process. The proposed ordinance would recognize both spontaneous and expressive events and provide clarity to the permitting process. Sheriff's Office has reviewed the proposed ordinance amendment and is supportive. Fifth item for consideration is to request a set of public hearing for October 6, 2020, to consider an ordinance amendment to County Code, Chapter 13, Article 11. The proposed ordinance amendment is related to the Bridgewater Road Service District. The roads have been completed and accepted into the state system. The proposed ordinance amendment would seek to establish each parcel's share of the district tax liability, prepayment options, fixed taxable value related to the district's tax rate, establishing a procedure for modifying or changing parcel boundaries, and clarifying the ordinance language. A table outlining each parcel's total district tax obligation is located on page 239 of your packet, and the table also details each parcel's district tax obligation and minimum payment requirements over the maximum 10-year term of the district. Sixth item for your consideration is a request to refer a proposed zoning ordinance amendment to the Planning Commission for a public hearing on October 1st. The proposed amendment is related to the timing for installing sidewalks and street trees and new residential developments. Our current zoning ordinance requires that these improvements be made once 50% of the lots associated with any development have been, have been issued building permits. And the request to change to the zoning ordinance would change the timing from the existing 50% to when the actual certificate of occupancy is required for each individual structure. The next item for consideration is a request to authorize the interim county administrator to execute an agreement with Dominion Virginia Energy to install street lighting and extend electricity to the existing Oilville Park and Ride. The project would light the park and ride located at the intersection of I-64 and Oilville Road with 10 30-foot-tall drop-lens lights. Electricity would need to be extended from the intersection of Oilville Road and Broad Street about a quarter of a mile underground to complete that project. In addition to requesting the authorization for the agreement, the Board has requested to appropriate an additional $91,290 in order to complete the project. The eighth item for consideration is a request to authorize the interim county administrator to enter into a contract for design-build services for the Tucker Park pedestrian crossing. Approval of the request would authorize entering into a contract with John K. George &amp; Company to complete the design-build work. The contract price is $160,000, which would include the original proposal price of $140,000 and a construction contingency of $20,000. If approved, design would begin imminently with an anticipated completion of the pedestrian crossing in spring of 2021. And then the ninth item, the Board has requested to authorize the sale of Chase to Deputy Greg Bach in the amount of $1 per Section Subsection 15.2-981 of the Code of Virginia effective September 13th, 2020. Chase has been with the Sheriff's Office for seven years, and has, and since he began patrolling, Chase has been the partner and constant companion of Deputy Greg Bach. Mr. Bach's last day with Goochlin will be September 13th, 2020. All contracts and amendments found on your consent agenda have been reviewed and approved to form by the county attorney, and myself and staff are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Stamen. Any questions on the consent items?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the consent items as presented.
Okay, we have a motion of second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second, any further comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, okay. There we go, consented agenda, all nine items are approved. Next item on our agenda is new business, the first one is Community Development Fiscal Year 20 Report, that's be Mr. Todd Kilduff, welcome.
Yeah, you got me. So used to flipping around on these things. I also want to say, welcome, Mr. Young, welcome to the Goochlin family, and we look forward to working with you. I get, we'll definitely get to know you a little bit more here in the next few weeks, so, I don't know if you need anything, but I'll just give me a call. I think you accepted my LinkedIn request, I think we're good now, so if you need anything, just let me know. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Todd Kilduff, Deputy County Administrator for Community and Economic Development Department, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to present our annual report to you. Sometimes we forget to take a moment to step, to step back and look at all the accomplishments we've done this past year. I will have been with the county eight years this month, and I feel like every single year that we do these reports, I feel like we just get busier and busier and busier, and I can show you some of the metrics in this report that shows that that is still true, and that's actually very exciting for all of us. I also wanted to thank the county staff that's here, they helped compile the report that's sitting in front of you, and there's copies on the back for citizens if anyone wants to pick up a copy. The actual report, once we're done here today, we're going to be posting on the internet, just like we did last year, so if anybody wants to take a peek at it, you're more than welcome to. So, this presentation's actually going to be a little shorter than it was last year, because if you recall, last year, we actually wrapped in, exactly, everyone was like, "Yay!" We actually had Public Utilities as part of the presentation. We actually broke Public Utilities out, if you recall, just a few months ago, they gave their own separate presentation, and I think even the year before that, we had Economic Development rolled in, they are now their own presentation as well. So this is just the true community development presentation, which for the citizens behind me, or those listening at home that may not know, that entire department is comprised of several different offices. We have the Customer Service Center, Planning, Zoning, Building Inspections, Environmental, Land Development Office, and then we also have a partnership with Monakin Soil and Water Conservation District, and Mr. Keith Burgess is here from, from the district, sitting in the back, he has a presentation as soon as I finish, and we also have one of the Board Directors here, which you may know, Mr. Jonathan Lyle, sitting in the back there, so, we're happy to have them participate with us. So I'm just going to go through each office, and it's basically, the, the format of this is very similar, we go through each function, and then some of the accomplishments we've had this past year, and I'll shore it up at the very end with some of the big-ticket items that, that we've handled just this past year, one of those items that we just have to take a step back and, and look at through a different lens and say, "Oh, my goodness, I can't believe all the stuff we've done this past year." So we'll shore it up with that. But, the Customer Service Center, first and foremost, is where our citizens, our contractors, engineering firms, architects, that's where they really go to first. It's just down the hall here to the left, we have a group of smiling-faced individuals who just love handling everything that comes through that door. If you've ever been in it, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. But they're basically the face of our department. Anyone that walks in for a permit, for a building inspection, any- in for a permit, for a building inspection, any type of utility building, that's where they go to first, and they handle, I would say, probably more phone calls than anyone in the entire county at the current moment. But one thing that we pride ourselves on in community development is the cross-training. Even though we're a small county and we do have a limited staff, one thing that we think is extremely important is that everyone knows as much as they can about what other people do. Now, of course, certain roles have certain certifications and things that they have to have, like Building Inspection has to have certain certifications. So there's some things other departments may not know, but one thing that's important is knowing how the Building Inspections Department functions, how planning functions, how zoning functions. And the Customer Service Center, they're basically the main hub for all those items and how they all interact with each other. And as you can see in some of the bullet points that I have up here on the screen, just this past year, we had an 8% increase on the permits that we undertook. We had 2,922 alone just this past year, and we scheduled almost 14,000 inspections. And I typically don't put too many charts in here. You're going to see some throughout the presentation, but I did think this one was important for the number of inspections. You can see from FY '16 up to FY '20, that's what, 5,000 permits or inspection increase just since 2016 alone? That's a huge increase for us, and these metrics are extremely important because while we're tracking them throughout the years, it tells us where we're sort of like getting to a breaking point where we may need to add another employee to help us accommodate those added inspections and demands. We also process 30 Plans of Development, which, for those who don't know, there's just basic site plans for anyone who wants to build something, 20 land disturbance permits. And one of our goals is always to get five out of five on our customer feedback. I mean, who doesn't want five out of five? We actually posted up here, we got a 4.93 on average this past year. The last quarter, we did get a five out of five, but some of the main feedback we get for that little bit lower number is, "I want to do my inspections online. I want to pay online. I want to get my permit online." And we've been hearing that for several years, and one of the projects that I have in a later slide is going to help alleviate that burden. So we're very excited about that project. Moving to Planning and Zoning, this is probably one of the departments that you see the most. They're dealing with all the conditional use permits and rezoning applications and community meetings that we hold. They're also the stewards of the Comprehensive Plan, or as short for Comp Plan, one of our main guidance documents here in the county. A little-known item is that the Planning Department also has our Transportation Department, which is becoming more and more lip service throughout, not just the county, but throughout the Richmond region on several different fronts, and I do have a few slides on that. And probably one of the more least desirable things we do is code enforcement. You know, nobody wants to go knocking on somebody's door and tell them, "Hey, you have to change this. You have to change that." But we are a complaint-driven county. We do not drive around looking for issues. If somebody calls us, that's when we actually go out and investigate, which leads me to this first bullet point here. We investigated approximately 20 zoning violations this past year. That does not mean we issued violations. That's just, we investigate it. They don't always turn into a violation. As a matter of fact, they rarely do, I'm happy to report, because most people, when we go to their house, if there's a neighbor that has an issue, this person has 10 cars on their property that are untagged, things like that, we'll go and we'll talk to them first, and sometimes it's just sort of a transitional thing. Like, one individual had very tall grass, so we went out and talked to him, and he said, "Hey, I bought a mower. It's just not here, and it won't be here for two weeks." As soon as he got the mower, went out and mowed, took a photo of his mowed grass, and there you go. It's, you know, problem solved, and that's what we like. This one, the next bullet point, attended approximately three community meetings every month. That is a pretty big impact. These are night meetings that we meet at people's houses, commercial businesses, different properties, to meet with our citizens, to let them know a little bit more about a conditional use permit or rezoning request that's come up. It's really an applicant's meeting, but we do attend it to help facilitate the conversation. And as you can see in the chart below it, these are some of the metrics that we've been tracking over the past several years. We had a pretty big increase in pre-applications, the one at the very bottom, the very long yellow line there. That was just last year. So we did have a reduction back to a little bit more of normalcy on that one, but these are some of the items that we do track. Goals and accomplishments. I can't say enough about this first bullet point. The zoning ordinance rewrite is complete, and I tip my hat to Joanne Hunter, Jamie Sherry, and the rest of their team in the Community Development Department. That was a heavy lift. It took several years to do. I think there was 30 meetings, somewhere around there, 30 different meetings from, with the Board of Supervisors' work sessions, the Planning Commission. We met even on the side with engineering firms and contractors. We wanted to get their feedback on things, and that helped really put together what we consider a very solid document, and we're very proud of that document. COVID-19, Derek mentioned it earlier. It has affected us. It actually temporarily moved all of our meetings online, and I think we, just like everyone did, we kind of scrambled that first month or two to make sure that anyone who had an application that still wanted to move forward still had a vehicle to use to move forward. So it took us a little while to get things up and running, but we did, and I think we had very positive feedback from everyone. And another item that we're really proud of is we actually worked with our Building Inspections Department and our Economic Development Department for outdoor seating at our restaurants. That was because all the restaurants, as we all know, were shut down very abruptly, very quick, and it hurt a lot of them. So we were trying to be creative on what can we do with our restaurants to help them get the capacity back if they can't have the amount of people inside the restaurants, and one of those was outdoor seating. So we worked very quickly. I think it only took maybe a week, week and a half to get everything set up in place and a little document that the business had to sign and let us know kind of what they were doing. The Building Inspections Department would go out and look just to make sure everything was safe, if there was a tent or something like that set up, so. The transportation side of things, this is mostly updates on a lot of items. Super happy about this first bullet point. The traffic signals around 288 and Broad Street are going in as we speak. If you've just driven on Broad Street, you can see all the construction that's going on right there. That's very important. I actually think I saw some of the mast arms going up. You saw them as well, which is very, very neat. As far as I know, the goal post hasn't moved from Thanksgiving as their completion date, so we're still sticking with Thanksgiving of this year as being completed. So hopefully that's still the date, or hopefully it's a little bit earlier. That'd be great. We did only have one secondary six-year plan item this past year, and that was completed in relatively quick fashion. That was on Youngstown Road, and that was done by VDOT, and we also had positive feedback from the citizens, because who doesn't want a paved road for free, right? That's part of our secondary six-year plan money. That's what we do. Maiden's Road, there was the bridge there. That was an impact. I think it was a three-month shutdown. It's just down the road here on the edge of the courthouse, Village Courthouse. And VDOT did that, and now that it's done, it's going to serve our citizens well and for at least 50 years or more, let's hope. But it looks really good. They did an excellent job on it, and I think they finished on the very last day or maybe a few days after. So you've got to tip your hat to redo an entire bridge in just a few months. Another item is the Central Virginia Transportation Authority. This is a new authority that's been set up. It's actually with, it's comprised of what we call Planning District 15, which is, if you're familiar with the Richmond Region Planning District, it's basically nine entities, nine different localities in the Richmond region that are part of this authority, and I don't think it's a secret that there's not enough money in VDOT's budget to do basically any of the road projects in the region, specifically ours, and we're constantly chasing our tail with trying to get funding from VDOT for certain projects. And I could go down the list from smart scale applications and things like that. It's just unfortunately not fruitful. We did make smart scale applications, four new ones this year, but unfortunately, that funding mechanism is only once every two years. So we made the applications in 2018 for four, which is actually our max. We're not allowed to have more than four, and we didn't get any funding for any of those. So we made four more applications just a few weeks ago, actually, and we'll see what comes out of that. Hopefully, something does, but if it doesn't, then unfortunately, we're set back another few years unless we decide to fund some of our projects ourselves, but they are millions and millions of dollars, some of these projects. So that authority is set up to have a funding mechanism, a separate funding mechanism to help move some of these projects move forward a little bit faster. Maybe a lesser-known item is we were awarded $500,000 for what's called an IJR, an Interchange Justification Report. This was actually an item listed in our major thoroughfare plan as a cross-connection between Hockett Road and Route 288, if you recall that, and it was also mentioned in the arterial management plan from, I think that was probably about five or six years ago when that was completed, which was actually the first one in the state, the first arterial management plan in the state, mentioned a new interchange on Route 288. Now, just to be clear, this is just a study, and that study may show it is justified or it's not justified. That's the whole point of it. And if an interchange is not justified there, then it should have solutions inside of it for what that actually means. I don't think it's a secret that Route 288 has major growing pains at certain times of the day, if not all day, in certain locations. So we're hoping that something comes out of this that helps us and helps guide our county on Route 288 and what we can do there. VDOT has already had a few items. The Transportation Planning Organization had an application, a smart scale application, to use what they call HSR, the Hard Shoulder Running, which is VDOT's creative way of saying, "Hey, we have two lanes north and two lanes south, but we also have these shoulders. Let's utilize these shoulders," which could save some money instead of widening all of Route 288, which would be much more expensive. So they're trying to be creative, and hopefully, this is another tool in our tool belt, once it's complete, to show what we can do and what we need to do for guidance. The Fairground Road, Sandy Hook Roundabout, which is just behind this building here, the engineering is well underway. I tried to find a better image. We just unfortunately don't have the pretty images, so we just have these engineering schematics that have a lot of jargon on top of them, but you get the, sort of the basic picture of what it would look like. The right-of-way phase has already begun, and the advertisement is still planned for early 2022 for that project. In conjunction with the roundabout, we want to extend that roundabout on the west side all the way to Route 288, which, again, would go behind this building over to, I said 288, to River Road, and that is still also under design. It's a little bit behind. We would love to do both those projects seamlessly. That's kind of our goal. We're sticking to it. We're doing our best. We are at the mercy of VDOT on a lot of this design item, so if anything changes on there, we will be reporting that back to you. And as mentioned earlier, we did make four smart scale applications to VDOT, just like we did two years ago, and fingers are crossed, something positive comes out of that. Moving to our Building Inspections Department, they're kind of the, I think I said it last year, sort of the unsung heroes of community development. These guys, you mostly never see, and gal, you mostly never see, because they're here like first thing in the morning, sometimes 6:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning. Casey Littlefield is our deputy building official. He was here at 3:00 in the morning the other day to do an inspection out at the Residence Inn. They were doing some fire alarm testing, and they wanted to be pitch black outside just to make sure they did some real-world circumstances if there was an issue out there. But yeah, they come in first thing in the morning. They grab their tickets. They grab their inspections, and they're out the door. So you're lucky if you see them on your way in. They're on their way out. So they do an excellent job. They do so much with protecting our citizens, and not just our citizens, but anyone. The Residence Inn is an example. That's for anyone coming to the county from another state, maybe from another country coming in there. And everything we build according to the Uniform Statewide Building Code, and to make sure everything is safe for our citizens and our Lot going on in this chart, so I specifically highlighted certain things. I want to make your eyes go across if you try to read the whole thing, but the big one is total permits issued. This matches back to the Customer Service Center, where from 2017, '18, and '19, we were relatively consistent, around 2,600 to 2,700 permits issued, and this past year, we jumped up 300. So that's something we're going to keep our eye on, see if it's an upward trend or if it comes back down at all. We're also looking at the residential trades. We have a lot of houses going in right now, and we reported, I think it was a few months ago, that we averaged about 20 COs a month, somewhere around there, certificates to occupy in houses, and we had, I think it was last month of the month before, we had about 45. So we over-doubled the amount of certificates to occupy that we've ever done, so, on average. And that also ties in with the residential trade, the residential permits issued as well, those two in conjunction with each other. The environmental land development, they're out there making sure that all of these projects that we've mentioned so far are out there, making sure that there's no negative impact on the environment. They look at so many different things, from stormwater management, sediment controls, and some people, they don't really necessarily understand why you have all these items on a construction project, but talk to somebody who didn't put them on there and had to spend thousands, if not tens of thousands of dollars rehabbing a stream that they didn't put soap fence up for, which is a dime a dozen, to stop sediment from entering that stream. It's happened before, unfortunately, so we do try to get the word out there that you do need to have these controls in place on your project. Otherwise, all the dirt will run off in a storm event and into our streams and rivers and things like that, and they could badly damage them. So they have a very important job, and they're also already liaison with Monakin Soil and Water Conservation District. So Ms. Debbie Byrd unfortunately retired yesterday. She is no longer with us, and Mr. John Wedburn took over for her as of today. I don't know if he's in here, John. Hey, there he is. He's an excellent guy. He's been here with the county for about five years, so he definitely knows how we move and shake. So he's going to do an excellent job stepping in for Ms. Environmental permits. We have stormwater permits issued in applications. It looks like they go up and down, but they're relatively consistent, to be honest, but it is something we look at. Land disturbance issued in applications and plans of development. So those are kind of the three main categories that we have in the Environmental Department, and again, they've been relatively consistent. They go up and down a little bit here and there, but we do want to make sure we watch these because that could negatively impact the amount of time we have to go out to projects and do inspections and the amount of plans that come in that we have to review. So it's something we look at closely. Monakin Soil and Water Conservation District, we do have a memorandum of understanding with them, so we do have a very good relationship. I want to thank, again, Keith for everything he does and Jonathan for everything you do and the relationship that we have. It's a very, very good one, and I think it comes from the transparency of both agencies and the relationship that we have. We go to all their meetings, and we participate as often as we possibly can in what they do, and we do appreciate that. But a little bit about what they do, and I'll go a little quick through there because I know Mr. Burgess has a presentation. He's going to go a little bit more in-depth into what their daily operations are and all the different touchpoints that they have in the county. But they check out what we call BMPs, Best Management Practices on agricultural land, storm ponds, things like that. They administer the Virginia Cost Share Program through VDOTs, and they also work closely with DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation, and that's on several different types of practices that I listed there. And there's more than what's actually listed, but there's cover crops, stream exclusion, nutrient management plans, and things like that. So they do an excellent job. One lesser-known thing that you may not know about is they have a lot of training that they do and a lot of educational programs that they do. I think it was last year, my memory's getting away from me, but I think it was last year, they actually showed us after their presentation, they had a little, kind of like you had an ant farm where you see the plexiglass and you can see everything. They actually simulated a pump, a well pump at your house, and dropped some dye in the top of it, and turned on the pump, and you could see the dye move through the soil and over to your well pump. So it sort of simulated. It's very important what happens on the surface of your ground could actually negatively impact your well system and the water you drink that your family drinks, excuse me, and even showering and washing dishes, things like that. So that was very important to see, and I mean, it took about five minutes, and it was very educational for everyone that watched it. Because we have an MOU, there are certain things that they have to report to us on a quarterly basis. As a matter of fact, we do have a contribution to them that's in the environmental budget, so that's actually discussed during the budget cycle. We talk about how many inquiries they have, how many agricultural contacts they've had, excuse me, how many contracts they've created, and as you can see, they had a 60% increase just on those alone, and number of educational programs or participants attending the programs. So these are all the things that they report to us on a quarterly basis, and again, Mr. Burgess will go a little bit further into those numbers and what they mean in his presentation. So I'm just going to shore it up here. I'm almost complete with, this is sort of the, let's take a step back and look at what happened this past year. So many big projects have come our way, so many big projects under construction, about to construct, or have just completed construction. The Tucko Pines Retirement Life Community, if you haven't seen that, that's the image of it right there on the top right. It's still got some siding going up and some brickwork. It's amazing to think about what that was just about a year and a half ago, I think. It was just some trees and some empty land. It wasn't cultured or anything. It wasn't used to trag or culture, but it was just open land. I think a bunch of hunters were on there, but to see what it is now is kind of amazing. It's right across from the Rivlegate neighborhood. Their contractor is doing an excellent job. Our building official said that they're actually a really good contractor and very easy to work with, so we're very proud of that project. Reader's Branch and Mosaic, two neighborhoods. If you've driven through either one of them, which you can, you'll see sold, 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 sold in Reader's Branch, and if you drive through Mosaic, you're going to see sold, 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 excuse me, on a lot of their roads. So their houses are flying off the shelves, and when I say sold, some of them are still just a dirt lot, like it's just a dirt lot, and then they say sold out front. So we're doing everything we can to help those contractors and developers move their projects along as well. The Benedictine Gym, also another project that went very well. I feel like we blinked our eyes and boom, there was a gym there, but you can see it on 288, especially if you're on River Road. I got to take a tour with it with their director, Jesse Grapes, a few months ago, and it looks really, really beautiful inside. They did a good job. Tucko Bridge Subdivision hasn't started yet. Reed Marsh Subdivision, I don't know if you've seen it. It's right across the street. Big dirt lot right over there, but as you can see, they are moving very fast. I think they've already sold a lot of lots, is what we've heard through the grapevine. I think it's 62, 64 lots is what they have, and I think they've sold several dozen already, is what we're hearing, so. Avery Point, another huge project for us. It's about, I think it's 1,400 units. It's at the end of Wilkshurst Parkway in the notch. It's a continuing care retirement community. As you can see, they already got their little customer service center set up. They got some carports set up, and just like Reed Marsh across the street, if you were to drive to the end of Wilkshurst, or as close as you can to the end of Wilkshurst Parkway, they actually have some barricades. They don't want you going too far. But if you go by the customer service center, you can see basically what's across the street there times 10. It's just all these trees that they've taken down, all this land they're disturbing, and they're starting to get a lot of that horizontal construction in. So they're moving along really quick. Manikin Town has not started yet, but that's the county's first mixed-use Manakin Town has not started yet, but that's the county's first mixed use development. Event Makers was withdrawn, but I put that on here because I did want to note how, how much of an impact it was on us. There was a lot of community meetings, there was a plan and commission meeting and board meeting. So we sort of stayed in that line. But the county staff really did field a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails from, mostly citizens from Henrico County, but, but they still, you know, we wanted to make sure we addressed them in a timely manner. So there was a lot of time and effort put into Event Makers, even though it was withdrawn. There was a lot of effort there on staff's end. The office rezoning on Patterson and Creekmore hasn't started. Four new communication towers, a mining facility in Oropak. So there's a lot that's happened with us just over the past year. So the development impact, we still have a little over 2,400 residential lots with approved zoning that are platted or anticipated to be platted in the next five years. Just like with the zoning ordinance rewrite, there's another heavy lift that the director and assistant director of community development have, and that's a subdivision ordinance. That's one of the next big things we have on the list. It is underway. It's not completed by any means, but they're putting a lot of time and effort into it to make sure that it looks just as good as a zoning ordinance rewrite does. And this last item here, sort of mentioned it at the beginning, this is shoring it up here, gave you a little spoiler at the beginning. It's very important that we have some sort of online portal, some online permitting source that any contractor or home developer and anybody can go on and apply for a permit. That way they don't have to come in here. So that can help with COVID if you want to look at it that way. Somebody's not coming into this building at all. They can do it straight from their own house, apply for a permit, apply for scheduling, inspections, things of that nature. They can also pay their bill online, which we also think is very important, not just for community development and paying for permits, but also for public utilities as well, because we have a lot of people who want to pay their bill online. They can technically do it. It's through a different source called officialpayments.com, but that's not county related. We want to make sure we can shore up everything and not have different payment sources in different locations, because I think the treasurer has a different payment location. And we did coordinate that payment system with the treasurer, Ms. Duncan. So with that, we're always gonna continue to monitor the legislation as it changes and comes out. There's some things that can always impact us, whether it's economic development, community development, or even community development related. So there's so much that can impact us and we do watch that very closely. And as always, we will continue to provide outstanding customer service as often as we possibly can. And I think we do hit that mark. So here's some of our smiling faces in community development, building inspections and all the other departments. So with that, if you have any questions on the report, the presentation, I'm happy to answer them. And if there's something I can't answer, we have our staff here behind me that can help. Sure.
Okay. Mr. Kilduff, thank you very much.
Sure.
Board, comments, questions?
I'd just like to make a comment, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
You know, one of the most frequent questions I get since joining the board is what surprises you most? And while I think you sort of intuitively understand that there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, I don't think I truly appreciated how much goes. It's not just showing up for a community meeting, getting an application and then, you know, standing here representing the project. You know, that's hours and hours and hours of work that is extremely valuable and probably one of the more valuable things we do for our citizens because it touches everything and how our county looks and feels and operates. So just thank you and your team for all of that. And I love when, I love when folks get up and they say, you know, it was great working with the team and wow, I've worked in other localities. That's exactly what we want, Mr. Young. Yeah. So thank you for that.
Sure. No, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Wow. Very nice. Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Peterson.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Kilduff. I appreciate that. I was looking over, it looks like slide 17 and 18, where you list all the major accomplishments, the Tucko Pines, Reader's Branch, et cetera. Is there, is it full in your purview or maybe perhaps somebody else's to kind of tally up the capital investment in the county and the number of jobs created in the county?
Yeah. No, excellent question. We do have that information. That mostly lies in the economic development department. We actually created a spreadsheet probably about a year ago where we began tracking the capital investment and even further square footage of commercial business, things like that. But we do have all that information, yes.
Okay.
I don't have it on me, but yeah, back in the opposite.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be interesting to see perhaps some of the other board members would want to see as well, because for our, you know, our unemployment in the county, that kind of thing, it's nice to know for creating jobs for folks that can live, work and play and not have to leave the county. And also the dollar investment in the county is a good indicator, particularly for some of these commercial investments. So we can better, keep better ideas as we go into the budget season next year, what we can expect. So that information will be helpful. I appreciate it.
Sure. Yeah, no problem. Not a problem.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Anything else at this point? Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Kilduff, you're off the hook. Thank you very much.
Mr. Burgess, it's all you, sir.
Next, Mr. Keith Burgess, Monakin Soil and Water Conservation District, welcome.
Appreciate you all giving me the opportunity to come speak to you all a little bit about our accomplishments for this past year and some activities that are coming up. It's always interesting to present information to a public body such as this and to an audience because very few people know who we are, what we do. You all as elected officials understand the election process. Our board of directors is made up of four. We serve Powhatan and Goochlin County, starting off with. We have four publicly elected directors and yes, Jonathan Lyle is one of our Goochlin elected directors, Ronnie Knuckles is our other Goochlin elected directors. And then we have two appointed directors. One of them is our extension agent, Rachel Henley, from, who's a Powhatan A and R agent, agricultural natural resources agent. We will fortunately, hopefully, when her term expires, be able to appoint Nicole Schuman, who's the agent for Goochlin County. Typically, that rotates back and forth between those two. And it has been many, many years, 25 plus years since we've had that ability to rotate agents. So I thank you all for having and maintaining a Goochlin Virginia Cooperative Extension So education and outreach, a few things that we try to do. We were able to attend the Manakin Farmers Market back last fall. Did not attend this spring for multiple reasons. We're also active with the James River Area Cleanup, where we helped coordinate that project this past year. I think they pulled 85 tires out of the James River this past year. With all of this COVID thing going on, we've changed a little bit in our operations. We've tried to expand our Facebook page. We're also recording educational videos. As Mr. Kilduff said, last year, we did a presentation with you all with the groundwater model. Now we're starting to record those, put those on YouTube now. So I believe we have a YouTube channel now where you can go in, not only see our videos, but see links to other Soil and Water Conservation District videos from across Commonwealth. Adult and youth education, again, that's changing a little bit. But on the left, you see one of the field days that we routinely type have at our farm operations, where we are demonstrating our agricultural best management practices. On the right, there's a picture of Betty doing some in-class educational programs. She was able to do programs this past fall at Byrd and Randolph Elementary School. Our adult education, these past, this past year has included our monthly beef cattle 360 meetings where we work with Virginia Cooperative Extension. We don't always attend those meetings. We're doing virtual meetings right now. And with our limited internet access in the county, that's created some issues for some of our individuals. So we're hoping with this new broadband system that's coming available, that will improve those virtual type meetings in the county. We're participating with Virginia Cooperative Extension on the well water testing program, which will be coming up next month. We've also assisted again with the private pesticide applicator classes and also the Women in Agricultural Conference was again held at Central High School at the Goochlin Agricultural Center. And I think they're working on plans again to do that program next year. This slide, on the left is where Randolph Elementary School was able to go to Tucker Park. I think this is probably last spring's picture from looking at the photo. We couldn't accomplish it this year, but we did bring those kids out to Tucker Park where they could get some, I guess I'd say, field experiences in environmental education and do some actual water monitoring of the James River, look at some macro invertebrates, understand water quality. Getting their hands involved and engaged really makes an impact on them. Our Envirothon competition, that is a, we were to host the Area 3 competition this year, was to be held in April. We did the training in March, the weekend before COVID hit, but then we had to cancel that program. But that covers, like I say, eight Soil and Water Conservation Districts in the eastern part of Virginia. The Virginia Conservation Assistance Program, we continue to meet with landowners about that. It's kind of an urban type conservation program. Unfortunately, when it comes to, I guess you say, the rubber meeting, the road, we haven't done any projects yet. When the landowners look at they're paying 50% of the cost and realize that they need to do some things, we haven't had anybody in either county to successfully complete that project. Most of these projects are focused more for more intensely developed areas. Most of our contacts have been with people out in the urban areas. Some of these conservation projects, I was on a couple last week, you know, and we're still talking about to solve the driveway issues or something. We're still talking about $4,000, $5,000 out of pocket to fix those. Most people want the quick fix. And those quick fixes, as we always know, may not be the best, best method to solve those problems. So we're still providing our technical assistance as timing permits, but our focus continues to be on the agricultural program. This year, we're again running the Virginia Agricultural Cost Share Program. We have a half million dollars of funding available within the district for Goochlin and Powhatan Counties. And that's 75 different conservation practices that are eligible for cost share. Cost share ranges anywhere from a flat $15 or $20 per acre for implementing some best management practices, up to 100% of the cost of implementing those practices. Our agricultural BMPs, some of you all may see some signs. There's a sign I know on 522, just north of here, there are a couple of signs, I think on Route 6 as well, showing some of these practices. Cover crops, where we plant, have producers to plant a small grain in the fall of the year to minimize erosion, to take up nutrients, protecting erosion gullies on their fields. This, currently right now, we have 72 long-term contracts, which are contracts that extend more than one year. And with those 72 contracts, we have 4,432 acres under contract to maintain conservation practices. So we're responsible for making sure those 4,400 acres are continuing to implement conservation. Last year, and these are last year's statistics alone for Goochlin County, we dispersed over $300,000 for conservation in the county, is what we did. We had 95 best management practices implemented. There were 19 different contracts for those practices and we paid for conservation on 4,650 acres. Now, when you stop and you think about that, you say, wow, what is that? That's a lot of acres. How many of your, you know, how many acres in parks do you have? How many acres of other land uses does the county manage or other departments manage? So we're responsible for going out, looking at those acres, making sure these practices are implemented. The livestock stream exclusion project program, that's where we pay to fence livestock out of streams and to install alternative water systems. These automatic freeze proof waterers or limited stream accesses for livestock. On average, they cost $1,300 per acre that's in pasture. So if a producer has 100 acres of pasture land, that's gonna be 130,000, excuse me. Go through the math on that. You multiply that times 100, you see what the cost is. It's not cheap. So there's no way these producers could cover those costs out of their normal business operations. So this cost share program is very beneficial to them. And all of this helps to meet the Chesapeake Bay watershed implementation goal. We're helping to achieve those goals on a regular basis. I've shown this slide before, I think last year, but it still gets the point across. If you can see the before situation on the left and the after situation on the right, that red arrow is there so that you can see this is the exact same slide is what this is. And currently right now, under contract in Goochlin County with these livestock exclusion practices, we have 2,667 acres under contract. That equates to 22% of the pasture land in the county is under contract with us to maintain stream exclusion fencing and maintain water systems. That figure's gonna go up. We know as we look at our stream protection, we have 38 miles of stream protected and under contract. So we're very proud of that. If we calculate that out with a 35-foot average buffer, it's 165 acres that are under contract to be maintained in buffers. The new Virginia Agricultural Cost Share Program, I say new, it changes each and every year. And one of the things that they're allowing us to do is when these contracts expire, to go back and renew those contracts for another five years. So we continue those benefits in our, unfortunately, I say, our Chesapeake Bay modeling, we continue to see that, but it means we're getting credit for those practices that are being implemented. This is what we've got working in 2015. The state said we'll fund 100% of the cost share of fencing livestock out of streams and putting in the water system. Last year, we completed three of those contracts at $108,000 dispersed. We've got five contracts remaining that will be completed between now and June of next year. And that's gonna be approximately $450,000 paid out towards that. A few other things that are coming up to all of us, you all probably have not heard, but we're working with James River Correctional Center on that big massive gully that we all see when we drive by and it's been a isle for us for years. We have worked with the James River Association, state and federal agencies, between all of the Department of Corrections land within Goochlin and Powhatan County. We've been able to acquire about $2 million for conservation activities that will be going on on that land. Our goal is to get it done within the next three to four years. We are working with design on the gully, on the hillside that we see with Department of Conservation, Recreation, Division of Soil and Water Conservation. That gully will be fixed come this spring. We'll be doing engineering on that this fall. We've got the secured money, we've got that in hand, so we'll be fencing that out, stabilizing that in the spring of the year, which will be a tremendous, I think, aesthetic benefit as folks drive along Route 6 and turn that place back into the model that it was long before I was over here, which has been going on 30 years now. But we are excited about that project. We continue to work with multiple agencies, organizations. We work with James River Association. National Fish and Wildlife Grants have been obtained for buffer programs. We've also received some funding for some targeted buffers. There will be a launch of that program probably around first of the year where we're paying landowners to protect buffers even on non-agricultural land. So we can go into some of these larger lot subdivisions that landowners are not required to protect those buffers. We'll be able to provide some financial assistance and incentive to protect those, to put those areas into conservation practices. So we'll be able to record some of those things. That's what we're looking for. We want to thank you all. A few things related to budget, related to staffing. We just completed a two-year successful audit by DCR for our financial operations and overall business operations. There were no, no issues found in that. We are excited to continue that. In my history, we've always done a good job, but it's always nice. So it's a big responsibility as Derek said. So it's a big responsibility, as Derek said, about having those audits, but it's nice when they come through and say, you're doing a good job. We appreciate that. Staffing-wise, right now, our staff of, I can say, four. We have over 75 years of experience. However, come the end of December, we're going to be losing 32 years' worth of experience. Our administrative secretary is retiring effective end of the year. We have hired a new senior office, a new office administrator, Lissy Hamilton. She started back in July. She's doing a great job. We're excited about that because it's a new enthusiastic person. She brings a lot of skills, talents, and a new perspective on things, just like you will be bringing a new perspective to Goochin. We look forward to that. She's a younger person with better computer skills than those of us that have been around for a little while. We're also, with the Goochin Ag Center, we're able to continue to expand the use of that. Multiple state meetings are held there with conservation organizations. And I just can't say enough about being co-located with Virginia Cooperative Extension. That has served both agencies and our citizenry of this county so well. So we are appreciative of that, and we are still trying to work to improve our virtual capabilities at that location. So again, thank you all for what you all do for us. We hope to continue to be able to implement good soil and water conservation and benefit not only the citizens, but our natural resources in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Really appreciate it. Board, any questions, comments?
I do have a comment, last question. Thank you so much for this. And this may not be the best question for you, but I think of all the presentations we get, you are probably closest to our ag producers than, than anybody. What is the state of the ag producer in Goochin County? And if you can, and if that's too big a question.
And can you elaborate on that just a little bit?
So, you know, if you look at the prices of, of beef and pork that is going up, the processing is, is running amok, and people can't get their, their herds.
Products, right.
Products processed. How are our farmers doing?
Our dairy farmer is struggling, no question about that, because of low milk prices. It's not that, in so many of our producers, it's not that there's not demand there. The breakdown is between the production side of things and the, and getting it to the retail market. Most of our farmers are struggling. I think we really need to focus in protecting Goochin's rural character. The county really needs to focus on alternative ag and focus on services that will truly benefit the new alternative, the small farmers. We have tremendous potential. And Nicole, the extension agent, and I have multiple conversations about this on a regular basis. It's going to take true buy-in, and I, and I say this, and I think about, as a resident of Powhatan County, I see both counties, all rural counties, that are facing the growth pressure. It's going to take a true buy-in from county staff, the supervisors, and the agricultural industry, the farmers, to come together. One of the things about the ag community is the reluctance of so many producers to want to come to the table with government. But that's what it's going to take. So we meet with small farmers all the time. They don't know what services are available, so we need to come together. We need to truly improve our working relations and convince those folks, you need to come to the table for the future of agriculture and rural character in this county, so.
That's a great, that's an excellent answer, and it's a community, it's a conversation that needs to have. And I know this board just recently approved some tax abatements for folks with their equipment, with forestry, and I think we're, we want to help. Any, any support in getting that conversation going of, because I think this board is open to what can we do? We just don't know what we can do at this point, but I love, I love what you're saying and love to see if we can find some, some help.
I think, I think we can.
Like Mr. Lyle says, I like to eat, so.
Yeah, I think all, all of us enjoy that. And so the condition of our producers could be better. It's convincing, as we hate to say sometimes, us older folks of coming to the, being willing to come to the table. We've all got to work on that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Spunhour.
Chair, if I could, perhaps I can ask a more specific question. Do you track the number of farms, the average size of a farm, the number of people employed in farming, the number of acres dedicated to farming? Do you keep statistics like that at all?
We, we do not. The Goochin County Agricultural Statistics, which is compiled by USDA, they do that survey about every five years. The last census was in 2017. I'll be glad to, to share that with you.
Yeah, no, that'd be great, and I guess the, the nature of the question, the reason for it is if we can tease out or identify trends in there, we can, we get better insight into the condition and the health of the industry that you're serving. This was a great presentation on what you guys do. This is, goes beyond that to the, the folks that you're serving. How are they doing? And that's, maybe that kind of information would help us glean some trends and see how they're doing.
And as part of that, just here, we've had a 13% increase in the number of farms and a 13% increase in the land in farms from 2012 to 2017. And one of the things we're really talking about here is that the Economic Development Department needs to be the key in this, because this is not a job for Monakin Soil and Water Conservation to handle. It's not a job for Virginia Cooperative Extension to handle. It's really got to be part of the economic development and future of the county.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it, Mr. Burgess.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda are appointments, and we have several to do today. They're all in the board packet. We have Board of Zoning Appeals, David Waldeck and Dwayne Cosby. Board of Equalization, Lisa Melton. Design Review Committee, Joseph Royer, and Monakin Soil and Water, John Woodburn. Some are appointed and some are recommendations to Circuit Court Judges. So board.
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend an appointment to the Circuit Court Judges, David Waldeck and Dwayne Cosby to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and similarly recommend appointment by the Circuit Court Judge of Lisa Melton to the Board of Equalization, obviously on the effective dates that are shown in our packet. And next, Joseph Royer to the Design Review Committee, effective today as an alternate member, two-year term. And lastly, John Woodburn as our county staff member, representative to the Monakin Soil and Water Conservation District, effective today.
A second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I know Mr. Woodburn was there earlier. I believe he, he left. Anyone else here in the meeting today? Well, regardless, thank you very much for stepping up and volunteering. We need good people to do this job for us. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda, the final one before our dinner break, is a motion to enter into a closed meeting. Mr. Lumpkins, were you going to read that motion? Page 299. That was supposed to be a yes.
In accordance with the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.23711A1, I move that the Goochin County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the performance and duties of the county attorney.
We have a motion, we have a second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Roll call, Mr. Steny.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye, yes.
Mr. Spunhour.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Laskellet.
Yes. Okay, so we will adjourn to a closed meeting. Thank you very much, and expect to be back to certify the meeting sometime before 6:00 PM meeting. Thank you. Mr. Lumpkins.
Pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.23712D, I move that the Goochin County Board of Supervisors hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such business, public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Goochin County Board of Supervisors in the closed meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lumpkins. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Steny, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Spunhour.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Yes.
Ms. Laskellet.
Yes. All right. So we, we'll adjourn until 6:00 PM. Order of Business is Citizen Comment. For anything that's not on the, the remaining of the agenda tonight, please come forwards, give us your name, your address, and please keep it to two minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'm, I'm back for part two because I do respect the light, or try to. And Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Manikin Road, sorry. And as I shared earlier, there's a lot that people could complain about, and generally, if you look for something to complain about, you find it. I'm, I'm in a mode right now where I'm looking for things to say thank you for, and I did not get to go through my entire list, which, you know, is pretty cool. I needed more than three minutes to say thank you.
Wow.
And, yeah, pretty amazing. And one of them I didn't get to mention is, is our first responders here in the county. And I have shared with you before that I have encouraged you to revisit the budget to make sure that the funding is at a level that is adequate for what our growing county needs are. I know Mr. Badeski used to say what kept him awake at night was the fact that someone would call 911 and possibly would not have the response that, that was required. So I'm appreciative of the work that our first responders, EMTs, and Sheriff's Department are doing, and I feel safe here in Goochin. Number two is I also appreciate VDOT. Now, that's not always a popular thing to say, but even if their slogan is whoops, I think by and large, we got pretty good roads here in, in Goochin. And, and I'm particularly impressed with Mr. Nguyen, that he is responsive. He doesn't control the entire budget, but by and large, I appreciate the road system that we've got here in Goochin. The schools, you know, God love Dr. Rayleigh. I mean, I would not want to be making up a new answer for a new issue every day, as he probably is having to do, but I'm impressed with the records that academically as well as athletically, our school system has achieved here. And that's something that I'm very appreciative, I brag about our schools. And I've heard Mr. Peterson say, don't tell people that they get a first-rate application or education here for 53 cents on the $100, so, you know, but I still do it anyway. So the light flashed. I'm still appreciative for Ms. Bess Kaywitz taking care of my, my yammering, and I'll sit down and I'll talk about something else next month. How's that?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Is there anyone else? Okay. All right, seeing no one, we will close the Citizen Comment period and begin the public hearings. The first application is an application by Gail Gardner, and Ms. Hunter will present. And Mr. Lumpkins, you have a statement.
Madam Chair, I'm declaring a conflict of interest under the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act on this matter, given that a party to this transaction is a client of my law firm, so I'm going to exit stage left. Mr. Peterson, don't let him, let him start number two without me, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lumpkins. All right, so we lost one. Okay, Ms. Hunter.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. As Ms. Laskellet indicated, the first public hearing is a conditional use permit, CU 202006, applied for by Gail Gardner. The request is for a second dwelling detached for property and located in the Royal Oak Estate subdivision, which is located at 5268 Three Chop Road, almost all the way to the western edge of the county. The property is zoned RR. Most of the surrounding properties are zoned A1, so those RR lots is the Royal Oak Estates subdivision, which is about 10 lots. The property is designated on the comprehensive plan as rural enhancement area. There is a small family cemetery on the property. You can see that by the small red square in the top portion of the property. There is an existing home on the property. These aerial maps are a few years old. The original, the home was constructed in 2019, so it doesn't pick up on this. The property has both frontage on Broad and on Three Chop Road. The property actually accesses off of Three Chop Road. So the property owners are David and Kelly Worthington. They were the ones that constructed the home in 2019. Ms. Worthington's mother is Gail Gardner, and the CUP applicant. She and her husband were proposing to move a prefabricated mobile home onto the property. It's about 1,000 square feet and would do that to have additional care that is needed for family oversight. And the property is eight acres, and it's not large enough to be subdivided, so that's why they're going through this other route of having a detached secondary family housing unit. There was a community meeting held on June 23rd. No citizens attended, and no concerns were identified. At the Planning Commission meeting, no one spoke at the public hearing, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval with a 5-0 vote. So we have the conditions. These are pretty standard conditions for the detached housing units. So the use would allow that. Number two, only persons related to a resident of the principal dwelling shall reside in the second dwelling unit. It could not be rented. They would have to install smoke detectors and carbon monoxide monitors. Emergency vehicle access would need to be provided to the second dwelling unit. This cup would have a five-year expiration, which would take it to 2025. That way, we could verify that it's still a family member living in the, in the mobile home and then our standard transfer of ownership condition. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hunter, any questions? Okay, so as is our custom, we present the case from staff and then ask the applicant if they would like to come and speak on the case. Is there anyone from the applicant that would like to?
I would just like to ask the board if they would approve this for family matters, and we're not even sure that this is going to happen right away, but we would like to have this permit for going forward with the, with the health of our family. So, thank you.
If you don't mind, for the record, state your name and your.
Gail Gardner.
I pretty much guessed that. Okay, thank you. Ms. Gardner. Anyone else like to make a comment on the case? Okay, wait a minute. I haven't opened a public hearing yet. That was the, there you go. Time's up. So thank you, thank you, Ms. Gardner. So open the, the public hearing. Anyone like to make a comment, support or oppose this application? Okay, seeing none. Public comment period is ended. So any other questions that the board might have from staff? Okay, we have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the conditional use permit, 2020, number six, by Gail Gardner requesting a conditional use permit for a detached single-family home.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. There are no further questions. Mr. Steny, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Spunhour.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Laskellet.
Yes. Okay, there you go. You have, you have your approval. Thank you. All right. I'll allow Mr. Lumpkins to re-enter the room. Next application. Ms. Hunter will also present this case. This is Rock River, Inc. Ms. Hunter, please.
Yes. Good evening again. This is a proffer amendment, RZ 2005-11A, by Rock River. It's requesting amendment to proffers dealing with setbacks, the building setbacks. Property is located, again, in the western portion of the county. You can see the comprehensive plan map designates this property as rural enhancement area, and the property is zoned RR. So you can see this is sort of a U-shaped RR zoning with an A1 piece of property in the middle. These two properties were actually zoned at the same time. They were two different cases, but they had the same proffers. So both of them were zoned in 2011. You can see the properties to the left were subdivided. However, the property to the north, which is subject to this proffer amendment, was not subdivided. Again, no construction has occurred on the property. It is a vacant lot. So the subject property, as I indicated, when it was rezoned in 2005, it was for the purpose of creating two lots. Although they received the zoning, they never followed through and subdivided the property, so it is just showing continued now as one lot. So there was two proffers in the 2005 case that the lots would be subdivided into two lots, and no residential or accessory dwelling shall be constructed within 350 feet of New Line Road. And that's really the basis of the proffer amendment. So you can see, this is the parcel here. You can see where they would subdivide it potentially, if they want to, a lot in the rear of about five acres and up front here, 11 acres. The property's total about 16 acres. They would like to, so proffer one, there is some changes, just to correct the acreage. Those were just incorrect in the 2005 proffers. But the point of the case is really to amend proffer number two to decrease that building setback requirement from 350 feet to 100 feet from New Line Road. The applicant has indicated that they only plan to construct one home on the property, but they would like to retain the right to do so, to subdivide it in the future if they'd like to. The applicant was not aware that the property was subject to proffers and purchased the land, and the title search did not disclose the proffers. The applicant does have a contract with the buyer. They are a home building company. They have a contract with the buyer to build a single-family dwelling with a proposed setback of 100 feet. So when we record proffers, so anytime a plan of development is approved or a subdivision is recorded, we require them to put the proffers on either the plat or on the plan of development because neither one of these occurred after the rezoning. It did not get picked up in any title searches or anything like that from the courthouse. In response to this and other issues that we've been having, the county is working on a project to digitize and attach all the proffers and permit conditions to the zoning map on our website. So that will make this issue much easier and prevent issues like this in the future. That project is about 75% complete, and by the end of the year, we hope to have that up and running so that anybody can look on a piece of property, click right on it, and get the proffer so that issues like this would not occur in the future. From a planning perspective, we went back and looked at why they had information, why they set this 350-foot setback. At that time, the RR zoning did not have any setbacks. However, there was some language in the ordinance about having rural character and preserving view sheds and things like that. So right now, the RR district does require a 200-foot setback for all single-family developments, which is significantly less than the 350 proposed with this zoning case. Most of the surrounding properties are zoned A1 and RR, which would have a minimum 75-foot setback. So reducing this to 100 feet would actually, you know, make it more in character with the area as it develops than setting this one property way back at 350 feet. A community meeting was held on July 29th. Ms. Laskolet and two citizens attended the meeting. There were questions about other setbacks in the area and if the applicant planned to subdivide the property. No one spoke in opposition at the planning commission meeting in August. No one spoke at the public hearing, and this request was approved with a 5-0 vote by the commission. So these are the black line conditions. Again, condition number one is just correcting acreage, and then number two is changing that setback from 350 feet to 100 feet along New Line Road. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board, any questions for Ms. Hunter?
Could you, oh, sorry, go ahead. Could you just talk a little bit more? Will this carry through to the two parcels? And are we sure that the one parcel is in the back? So it would be nowhere near New Line Road?
So are you talking about if they subdivide this property?
Correct.
Yes, so the proffers would run with the land, and it would be subject to the entire property. So if they subdivided this five acres in the rear, the proffers would also apply to that property.
But because of its location, unless they split it up?
It probably doesn't have an issue.
North and south, okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Hunter, I do have one question. I appreciate you saying that we have found a area we can improve by checking on the proffers when there's not been a plat submitted. So I totally get it, and I appreciate that. How much, what was the fee to file this application?
I believe a proffer amendment is $1,050, but let me double-check the application that's right here. It'll be on the application.
Take your time.
Do you recall what you paid?
My inside coordinator handled it. I think I remember $1,050, but...
I think it's $1,050. That's what I'm, my general recall is the cost for a proffer amendment is $1,050.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hunter. Any other questions? Does the applicant like to make any comments? Speak now. If you'll give us your name and your address, please.
So I'm Jeff Dinsmore, 1447 Meredith Mill Road, Broaden Axe, Virginia. I just want to kind of recap everything that she stated. We were looking, we had a homeowner that was looking for a lot in Goochlin County. Did a lot of back and forth, back before we found this lot. It was a 16-acre parcel. During our study period, which we always do, we have the homeowner has an opportunity to place the location of their house so we can do our due diligence to make sure that everything works before we purchase and go under contract with them. As she stated, because of the questionable methods, the way the rezoning was done, nothing came up in a title search. When I called zoning and planning, it was a 75-foot setback off New Line Road. We had no way of knowing any of this until we submitted a site plan. And, you know, and it's kind of a funny thing, but Anita in planning, I guess, she was here at that time, so she pulls a paper out of her drawer and says, "Wait a minute, this lot, I remember this." And here we are with the proffers. So the property is useless to us, the way it is right now, and we're in a bad situation, which I feel like could have been avoided had there been a different process for the way this was handled. So...
Do you still have a homeowner or a home buyer under contract?
I have them under contract pending tonight's meeting. You know, it's been, it's been kind of a long process for them, too. It's been over three months. We should have started the house three months ago. So we have the cost of holding the lot for three months, and, you know, it's a bunch of other variables.
Right, right, okay. All right, thank you very much. Any questions? I'm sorry.
I just want to, real quick, if you don't mind. Thank you, Madam Chair. Did you purchase this land or take it under option from the folks that did the rezoning? Was this something that they would have disclosed to you in the process of selling this to you? Or was this a previous owner?
It was listed on MLS. We purchased it. We are the owner now.
Yeah, maybe, but the seller that you bought it from, were they the ones that did the rezoning?
So it's my understanding through, once all this started, doing the research, where she's mentioning the two parcels, it was two brothers at the time that did the rezoning process so they could subdivide. The lady that we purchased it from was the widow of one of the brothers.
Oh, okay.
He never decided to record his part, and I'm not sure, given her the benefit of the doubt, that she even knew what was going on.
Might not have been aware of the proffers.
But the other brother, he did subdivide his, and another house has been built on it. And I can say that our buyer has no intentions of subdividing or doing anything. And the whole purpose of having this 100-foot setback is, if I go another 150 feet back, it disturbs the hunting land that he wants to be able to hunt and keep in natural setting.
All right, good, thank you. That's my, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Open the public hearing on this case.
Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Manneken Road. I was one of the two citizens who went to this community meeting. And I went because I have an interest when someone wants to change a zoning that was proffered, that they said, "Yeah, we're going to do this." And now that we don't want to do it, and when I heard the gentleman's story, I hope you will approve this. Let me just get that out of the way. I hope that you will grant this request because I have been there where, oh, yeah, they said they were going to, but they didn't. But here's something that helps me remember. And I fully appreciate that as we go through growing pains here in Goochlin, we're going to get automated, and there's still going to be mistakes. Anybody's ever filed a tax return, the IRS will sometimes find some kind of ciphering error. But I hope you'll approve it. I fully appreciate what the gentleman's going through. This is, if he had known, you know, he could have addressed it earlier on. And I'm even going to be so bold. If there was a mechanism for rebating his CUP fee for having to go through this, I would be in favor of that, too. Because this is not a mess of his making. This is something that just kind of came up at the, kind of a gotcha at the last minute, in my opinion. So I hope you'll approve it. I feel, I always like to hear somebody say they want to hunt some property because I'll tell you, the deer have been messing around with my garden this year. I'll just leave it at that. So those are my comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anyone else? One, two, three, okay. Close the public hearing. All right, gentlemen.
Madam Chair, I found it interesting that somebody would want to move to the county, especially a rural part of the county, and move closer to where a road. I think that's the first time I've ever heard of that. So I drove out there this morning, and it looks like they were clearing land. And if where they're clearing land today is where it's going to be, you're not going to be able to see that house at 100 feet anyway. It's going to, it's going to be consistent. I guess we'll just have to see, because it did, we'll have to see if, you know, it does come up for, you know, subdividing that lot later on. But it does, I did drive up and down the road, and there are houses a lot closer.
Yep.
It does maintain that, that look.
And would like to make a motion?
Just a question is, is it possible to approve it so that the lot can't be subdivided in the future?
Another, would that be another proffer condition?
So the property is zoned RR, so as long as they can meet the minimum lot size requirements of RR, it could be subdivided. There's nothing in this proffers that would prohibit the subdivision.
Is that a five-acre name?
It's, yeah, it's, the RR district is five acres.
So at the most, you could put one more house on it.
Right. So there is that proffer that says that one lot will be 11 acres and one would be five, but it doesn't prohibit it. It just, they couldn't get three lots out of it, which technically, if they didn't have that proffer, they could. But that proffer says that, so that get the language, zoning be limited to two parcels of five and 11 acres. So it does allow that creation of the one lot, one additional lot.
I just, was just curious.
That's a good question. Any other questions? Ms. McGee, do we have the authority, if this board so chose, to return the application fee?
I am not aware of any authority that the board has to do that. The situation that could have occurred would be if there was a situation where there was an error. And this wasn't really an error. It just so happens this lot didn't go through subdivision. But in that situation, the board could have been asked to initiate the application itself on behalf of the property owner, which would thereby avoid the application fee. But I am not aware of any authority that we have to waive or return or rebate the fee at this point in time.
Yeah, we did feel for the applicant, and we did expedite the case. It would have technically really been another 30 days. We did not want him to wait that long, so we went ahead and accepted his application before his community meeting, which is, you know, not our process.
Right.
But the code does allow us to, on unique circumstances, to expedite the process. Unfortunately, with advertising and the planning commission meeting falling after the board, we expedited it as much as we could and still meet all of our requirements. But we did cut off about 30 days. But, you know, we do, you know, it was still a difficult situation.
Right, no, I appreciate it. And certainly, nothing was done. And, you know, we actually learned something from it, so in the future, it'll be better. Okay, it's just a good question, since the citizen brought that up. Okay, gentlemen, if there are any questions, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the proffer amendment to reduce the setback from 350 feet to 100 feet, as proposed.
Second.
Second.
And that's just generally to accept the case as proffered, since there were, the proffers read a little bit differently than that, but that was your motion.
That was exactly what I was thinking.
That's right.
Verbatim.
And then what he said? Okay, so we have, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions? Mr. Steny, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lumpkins.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Spoonhour.
Yes.
Ms. Laskolet.
Yes. Okay. You're approved. All right. Item number three is an ordinance to establish a voter satellite office. And we have Ryan Mulligan, General, Goochlin County General Registtor. He'll talk to us about this.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me here to talk about the establishment of a voter satellite office here in Goochlin County. Now, so what is being requested Now, so what is being requested is an ordinance to establish a voter satellite office right out here at the Parks and Recreation Building. The address, 1800 Sandy Hook Road, to be used for the in-person portion of absentee voting beginning September 18th for the November 3 election. So, right, what's being proposed is to establish a satellite voting location right out here that will be open normal business hours, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. And of course, we also have to be open the last two Saturdays before the election, October 24th and Saturday, October 31st. And on those days, we're open normally nine to five. So why this is needed, during a presidential election, always turnout is higher than normal. And then on top of that, due to the pandemic, absentee voting in particular is going to be, have a very high turnout, both by mail and in person. Actually, over 10% of voters have already applied to vote by mail. So that is kind of the canary telling you what's going to happen, what it's going to look like. So this will allow me to, or the office of the registrar, to move the in-person operations, absentee operations, out of the building we're in now to kind of let us spread out, separate those operations. We can focus on the mail operations and the, like, election preparation operations at the office. And then all the in-person voting will be going on in a separate location just to kind of streamline things. And so as a service level, it's going to make it more efficient because everybody who walks in the door over at the Parks and Rec Building, we know is there to vote absentee in person, and they can focus on that. Whereas when somebody walks in my door, I know they're there to do something else, either turn in their ballot or register to vote. And it'll just make it, you know, handling those things more efficient because we know exactly what we're doing. We don't have to jump back and forth, which it also makes it more convenient, kind of for the same reason, for the voter. Because if they want to vote absentee in person, they go to the Parks and Rec Building. That's all anybody's doing over there. They don't have to wait in line behind somebody who's there to register to vote or turn in a ballot that was mailed to them or something like that. It's going to be more comfortable, though I do really appreciate the new building that we just had the ribbon cutting for today. This will, we'll be able to handle more people and have them inside the building rather than outside. So we can have, you know, it'll be more comfortable for the voter. It's going to be quicker. Again, since everyone who walks in the building over there, we know is there to vote absentee in person, we'll be able to knock people out very quickly because everybody will be doing the same kind of transaction. And of course, it will be safer due to the pandemic. Having it in the Parks and Rec, kind of going through the lobby, through the gym, and into the, I believe, the dance studio that's off of the gym. Again, it'll let us have a longer line. We'll be able to social distance more appropriately. It keeps, again, co-mingling, you know, only the people that are going to vote absentee in person don't have to, you know, be around the people that are in my office doing something else and vice versa. The public that's going to be in my office, say, registering to vote, there's not going to be a crowd of people that are there to vote absentee. So it kind of separates those two groups. As far as budget goes, it should have very minimum impact. The facility is already owned by the county, so there doesn't need to be, you know, rent or lease or anything like that. No extra equipment is necessary. To be clear, it's moving the in-person voting operations from the office of the registrar to the Parks and Rec Building. It's not going to be on top of, it's more in place of. So the equipment that I already have, that I normally use for this kind of thing, we would just use that same equipment. So no extra equipment is necessary. And also, this is one thing that can be compensated with the CARES Act money, specifically because the high turnout is most likely because of the pandemic. That's why we're experiencing such a high absentee turnout. So any staff compensation will be covered by that. Sorry, I blew through that really quick. I wanted to keep it short and sweet. Are there any questions for me?
All right. Any questions? Mr. Peterson.
Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you for that presentation, by the way. I know this is a moving target, a fluid situation, and it's rather unique. And there are a lot of things that pertain to this year that may not pertain to other years.
Right.
My question really is, you know, how do we inform all the citizens? Because as I understand it now, they have a myriad of choices.
Yes.
They can vote absentee with no excuse, they can vote through the postal service, they can drop it off, they can put it in a machine, they can vote in person. There are a myriad of ways to vote. How do we get as many people as possible, if not everybody, to understand all the different choices to make sure that they don't do one thing wrong and then their vote is set aside? Do you understand the question?
Yes. So I already, obviously, planned to put it up on the website. As far as satellite locations, those where they can vote in person, I don't know if I'll be able to get it in the newspaper, the timing, but I would like to get it in the newspaper next week. But I'm supposed to have at least on the website the locations by 55 days out from the election, which I think is the ninth. So that's the website, putting it in the newspaper. I don't know if I have to put the instructions in the mail-out, the ballots that I mail out, since that's a separate thing. I don't think I have to put it in there, but I could put it in there also. But is that?
Yeah, well, I mean, the website, I understand from Dr. Riley that not everybody has internet.
Correct. Yeah. I just don't know, a mail-out to everybody would be pretty expensive, but that could be an option to maybe get, like, a mass mailer out to.
Sure. I mean, I don't really have any suggestions at this point, and this isn't really to put you on the spot either.
All right.
I asked the question just to raise the issues for discussion and exploration because I would like to, there are just, there are so many moving parts. I'm not sure if I asked two people in this room if I'd get the same answer.
Right. Absolutely.
I just, I would challenge you or ask you to think about that and figure out ways to let everybody know what the rules are. Because once you know the rules, then you can figure out what to do from there.
Right. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
And if you don't mind, I like to add on to that because we definitely are changing Lear Road polling location and possibly changing Haines. So now that we're changing the physical location, we're changing how you can vote. So, and I know, I understand, it's a moving target, you're waiting for our guidance. But that's just a comment on that. I've got a question, if you don't mind, the COVID funds, the CARE Act funds. Did you receive separate CARE Act funds? That's not the county's money.
Correct. Correct. I don't know if we've physically, I don't know if we've actually received them yet, but we are going to.
Okay, so you do have a source of funds?
Yes.
And you are hiring additional staff?
Correct.
To man, to man the satellite office?
Yes.
Okay. And we don't know yet, since this afternoon, any, well, I guess we won't know till Friday about the drop boxes or?
Right.
Yeah, got you.
The, well.
Whatever you call them.
Two bills passed, but they have, I think they have to swap houses, and then the governor has to sign, so.
Yeah, they have to go to Congress.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's all. Any other questions from anyone else at this point? Mr. Lumpkins?
Real quickly. So we're coming up on the 60 days pretty soon, right?
Correct.
So we got to get this done before 60 days. I noticed you talked about putting something in the newspaper. You were just talking about advertising the fact of it. But we have advertised, we've properly advertised
Right.
prior to this tonight, that this has been advertised, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Tell us a little bit about the facilities for protection of the election materials in the new location.
And so the protection of?
The statute says any such location satellite office shall have adequate facilities for the protection of all election materials produced in the process. So I'm just wondering, really, I'm just want to hear that you're comfortable that.
Yes. As I understand it, we have the dance studio off of the gym. We have that room, so we can lock any materials in there when they're not, you know, being used overnight, and that's a secure facility.
Okay. And so somebody will be there, I guess, if you'll have staff there when it's open?
When it's open, absolutely, yeah.
And so this might be for our county attorney. After the election, do we have to pass an ordinance to undo this if we decide to remove the satellite location?
No legislation just for this year, I think.
The state law doesn't indicate what we would do. And so once we change the ordinance, it remains that way unless we, in fact.
Oh, looking for the satellite.
Do come back.
Sorry, I was wrong.
So 55 days before any election, you have to advertise the, which satellites you're using and what the hours are? So, right, this would, as I understand it, stay on the books, but you wouldn't have to use it every election?
Oh, I just, I just saw a part of the statute. It says, "No change in, including the creation or abolishment of, shall be enacted within 60 days next preceding any general election." So I was wondering if, just to keep in the back of our mind, that maybe we need to remove the ordinance
Right.
after the election, just, or consciously know that we have a satellite office there for the next election, I suppose.
And Mr. Mulligan has correctly stated the state law obligations that he has to more than 55 days prior to the election. Post it on the voter satellite locations, put it in the office of the general registrar, put it on the official website. And again, if he were to use this satellite office again in the future, he would do the same thing.
Have to post it again.
Mm-hmm.
Got you.
Thank you.
No more questions?
Madam Chair, a couple.
Yep, sir.
Sure.
Looking optimistically, if what I saw during the break today, we're apparently still in the same COVID restrictions have not been lifted like folks were hoping for for Labor Day. But what, you mentioned if people are going to the Parks and Rec Building, then they're only going there to vote. But what happens in the case that we are using the Parks and Rec Building? And, or will there be interaction with citizens then that are using the facilities? How will that work?
Right. So sorry, to be, I meant those going into that, specifically in that building, where we're doing the absentee voting, when they walk in that door, we know what they're there for. But so the plan, there's two doors going into the building. There's, or two sets of doors. There's a set on the left and a set on the right. So the voters are going to be cued to go in the set on the left, go right through the lobby, stick, basically stick to the wall, go straight through the lobby into the gym, but not really go into the gym, turn left, and again, right on the side of the wall, and then go into the dance studio. So there'd be little to no interaction with those that were actually using the gym portion.
Great. And the follow-up, I heard somewhere that this election might be a pretty contested election.
I've heard the same thing.
Just random rumors. What are some of the rules for campaign signage during this time?
At the new, if we do have?
With the satellite office.
So basically, it's the same as a polling place on Election Day, where there's a 40-foot line, and any campaigning has to be done outside that 40-foot line. And even if it's outside that 40-foot line, it can't hinder a voter from getting to the polling place. But yes, it would be allowed, but it would have to be outside the 40-foot.
Okay. Which could, that polling place could put it right in the middle of our operations for the building. Let's say crowds start to swell, you know, it starts to get, you know, a lot of voters turn out. It's great, people turning out to vote, it's a great thing. Are we working with staff to figure out, you know, when do we poll different levers? Or what levers can we poll to not impact our operations or day-to-day?
So when you say "our operations," you mean like citizens?
The administration.
Oh, oh, oh.
If I could, I could just jump right in. So when Mr. Mulligan discusses the 40-foot line, what we do is we actually mark each polling location at the main entrance with a semicircle, 40-foot semicircle, which clearly denotes where folks can and can't campaign and place signs and hand out all of their goodies. That being said, the majority of this will be in the parking lot, so we wouldn't allow folks to hang out in the parking lot. We need the parking lot to maintain our ongoing operations. So there, we honestly haven't gotten to the point where we look at that layout, but it's on our list to do in the next couple of days.
Sure. So it's on the radar?
It's on the radar. We will minimize any type of impact to county operations. And as Mr. Mulligan alluded to earlier, when we reviewed the Parks and Rec Building, one of the reasons we went that route was because it would not negatively impact the day-to-day services that we provide from a Parks and Rec standpoint and would provide him the opportunity to have the satellite voting office. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Peterson.
Just one more, if you don't mind. Given all the changes we've talked about and the variety of different ways of voting and the idea that there might be some rumors out there that this can be a hotly contested election, let me just ask you a broad question. It costs some speculation, but if you don't feel comfortable answering it. Do you see any weaknesses or vulnerabilities in your ability to deliver an election that, with the integrity intact?
From what I do, my point, my part of it, absolutely not.
Okay. If you did, I would hope you'd bring that up and let us know.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, Dan. All right, thank you, Mr. Mulligan. So we'll open the public. Thank you. Okay, open the public hearing on this, this ordinance. Anyone like to speak, support, opposition, make a comment? It's your duty. Yeah. Yeah.
I will respect the light.
I know you will.
And if that's the rule, that's the rule. Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannequin Road. And I want to iterate several people's comments that voting is a good thing. I voted absentee when I was in the military. When I had business that was taking me out of town, Francis would say, "There's Mr. Lyle coming in to vote absentee," because I voted absentee a lot. And like Mr. Peterson, I understand we will be in compliance with state law, whatever state law is. So whatever the rules are for voting, I'm all for. I have been one of those goodies hand-outer people at polls. And so I am somewhat curious about the 40-foot as to whether or not that kind of informational activity will be permitted. And I've been hearing, while we don't want it to interrupt or impede county operations, which I also think is a good idea, parking came to mind. I know Mr. Stamey wept egregious tears when we had to take down some of the trees to expand parking. Will we have enough parking if indeed this is going to be as voluminous number of people coming to vote? Because I know in that back lot, as it previously existed, you know, once you get handicapped and some of the requirements for school, is there enough parking? And I don't know the answer to that. So those are comments and questions, not necessarily criticisms or endorsements. So I like the idea that there is an opportunity for people to vote. I fully expect that as historically Goochlin has done, there will be a process to make sure people are voting who are supposed to be voting. And that my question is, can people participate in the election process with the 40-foot semicircle without impeding ongoing county operations? And is there going to be adequate parking? And I don't have the answers for those, but those are the citizens' comments unless someone else follows me.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing. Okay, board, what's your pleasure? Anyone interested in making a motion? One, two, three.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the ordinance to establish the voter satellite office at the Parks and Recreation Building at the county complex for the November 3, 2020 election.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sharp. We have a motion. Have a second.
Madam Chair, I'll second it, and then if we could, just a little bit of discussion here. Ms. McGee, you mentioned, I think, that the state law for the changes around this election are going to sunset or expire after this election. Is that?
That's not anything that I mentioned. I was reading the state law about absentee voter in person. I don't see that this has an expiration date, but it could be on the bill and not written in what I have printed out.
Okay. And so it's really more of a question than an answer. Are they going to automatically sunset it? And even if they do, in January, at their session, they could always take up legislation to extend it or make it permanent. The only reason I raise this is if they were going to sunset permanently and do this as a one-off because of COVID, should we follow that same logic or not? But if they are, there is a chance that they're going to make it permanent or extend it for other future issues that might come up, then maybe we just wait and see rather than automatically sunset. So I just wanted to have that discussion before we vote it. Thank you.
Certainly, Mr. Peterson, we are going to be revisiting polling places. Mr. Mulligan and I have talked about in the spring, coming to you with some situations he's already thinking might be a good idea to change. It will know more about if this is going to continue or not. And then in the year or so after that, we'll have redistricting, polling placing effects. So this issue will be coming back up. We'll be sure to make we're on the straight and narrow in compliance with whatever state laws in place.
Great, thank you for that. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right, yeah, good answer. Okay, so, so we have a motion and a second. Everyone prepare to vote. Uh, Mrs. Stamey, please, roll call.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Mr. Sharp.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Laskolot.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Mulligan, you have your satellite office. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the ordinance to amend the county code in regard to removing a parcel from the Tucko Creek Service District, and that's Mr. Matt Longshore. There he is. All right, Mr. Longshore, you'll take us through this one, please.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Matt Longshore, Director of Public Utilities. And tonight I'll be presenting cases for two parcels that have requested removal from the Tucko Creek Service District, commonly referred to as the TCSD. As quick background, the TCSD is a water and sewer service district created in 2002 to provide water and sewer services to certain areas within the district boundaries, and also to provide a mechanism for repayment of debt service through an abhorrent tax. There are currently 1,900 parcels in the TCSD, and that includes the subdivided parcels. Since 2002, a small number of parcels have entered the TCSD as well as exited the TCSD, and one parcel was removed as recently as 2018. Since June 1st of 2018, a net value of $765,100 has been added to the district, and that'll be important a couple slides later. But first, the, the first proposed amendment tonight is due to a request by Ms. Josephine Sprouse as the property owner to remove Tax Map Parcel 58-6-0-5-0 from the TCSD. That parcel is located on Paula Lane, which is just off of Hockett Road and just south of the Reader's Branch subdivision. Some current information on that parcel is it's currently assessed at $181,000. The property owner does reside on the parcel, but she does not have access to public water and sewer service currently. So there are some consideration requirements in the county code that a parcel must, must pass to be even considered for removal from the district. And first and foremost is there must be an offset in loss of value in the district. So what that means is there, there has to have been an equal amount or greater value added to the district over the past two years of that that's being requested to be removed from the district. After that, the parcel must not already have public water and sewer service. It must not be a part of DPU's five-year CIP program. It must not have entered the district after May 7, 2002, which is the initial creation of the district. And it must not be zoned for occupied by any commercial use. The parcel in this case has passed all that criteria. So some additional considerations during the public hearing is the overall financial stability of the district as well as the timeframe in which improvements are projected to be constructed that will make public water sewer service available to the parcel. The parcel in question, in this case, I can tell you there are no current planned improvements per the county CIP. It's in a development-driven area. And as well as the impact of the parcel removal to the overall operations of the utility system. And again, those improvements are not planned currently. So with that, the proposed code change would be, if approved, to Chapter 14, Article 5, Section 14-251, it would simply be removing this parcel number from the code. So that said, I'll be happy to take any questions before the public hearing.
Gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Longshore?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, just one real quick. Thank you, Mr. Longshore, for that. I understand that if a, if a parcel requests to be removed, that there are certain penalties that would apply if it tries to re-enter.
Correct.
How do we make the individual aware of the penalties that might apply if they decide to change their mind in the future?
So for a property owner to apply for their parcel to be removed from the district, we have an application process. On that application, it makes them aware of all those penalties as far as being able to jump back in the district, so they, they just can't play the system. So it is directly on the application that they have to sign and submit to us.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good question. Any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Longshore. Is Ms. Sprouse here? The applicant is, is not here, okay. All right, then we'll open the public hearing on, on this ordinance. Anyone like to speak to this, please, or support? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing. All right, board.
Ready for a motion, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the ordinance to amend the Gutson County Code, Section 14-251, Tucko Creek Service District, to remove the subject parcel as presented.
All right.
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Spoonhour, we have a motion, and we have a second. There's no further comment. Mr. Stamey, will we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lumpkins.
No.
Uh, Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Spoonhour.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Laskolot.
Yes. Okay. The next item is also yours, Mr. Longshore.
All right, so the second public hearing tonight regarding a request for a removal from the TCSD is due to a request made by Richard and Janet Harper, and that is to remove Tax Map Parcel 47-1-0-45-C from the TCSD. The location of this parcel is right off of Rockville Road. This parcel was originally part of the St. Matthews Parcel just south to it and was subdivided back in 2017. This parcel is in Centerville. As you can see, it's proximity to the Centerville Food Line Retail Center. So some current information for this parcel, it's, it's currently assessed at a value of $121,800. The lot is currently unimproved and wooded. Again, it was created in 2017 by subdividing from a larger St. Matthews Church parcel. That parent parcel was included in the original TCSD. The property owner has stated they would like to join that parcel with the, the adjacent parcel where they currently live. Their adjacent parcel is not currently in the district. This parcel obviously is currently in the district, which is a discrepancy of not being able to join the two parcels currently. The property owner, again, resides on the adjacent parcel. So again, the same considerations I mentioned in the, the last public hearing, but I'll mention again, parcel must not have already have public water and sewer service. It must not be part of DPU's five-year CIP program, must not have entered a district after May 7, 2002, and must not be zoned for occupied by any commercial use. That parcel did pass all of that criteria. And again, the same consideration criteria during the public hearing. So with that, the proposed code change would be added in, in the section to basically say, and the Tax Map Parcel Number 47-1-0-45-C, which was created on June 6, 2017, as parcels that would be removed from the above section in the TCSD. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions on this parcel.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
So, so it looks like they, they live on A, and they, but they own A and C, and C is vacant.
Correct.
And they can't vacate the line between the two? Because if they want, or is the result, if we vote in favor of this, would they be able to then vacate the line? And that's their plan?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So how did it end up that this ended up, it was subdivided in 2017? How did it end up that this parcel, this new parcel got added? Do we, do we know how it ended up that that got added to the district?
I'm not real sure. I know St. Matthews Church owned a much larger parcel, and they, they split off a couple parcels from that. And that's what I've gotten from the assessor's history. As far as where that actual parcel came from, I just know it was part of a larger parcel originally.
If these folks wanted to add A to the parcel, would they be able to?
If they wanted to add.
If they wanted to join the parcel, join the district, is A eligible?
Oh, it's within the district boundaries, I would say, yes.
All right, that, thank you.
Mr. Lumpkins, was your question more, is, can they hook up now? And they're just not?
There, there's currently no service to the parcel or near the parcel. They live off of Rockville Road, and I can go back to the map. The closest water line is along Ashland Road, so they're pretty good ways away. There is a sewer line south of the parcel, but it's on the other side of a creek that would make it logistically very difficult to connect. So that's kind of where the parcel sits right now. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir, that green is the sewer line. Correct.
Bottom, bottom right, you can see it along Ashland Road, right?
That's right.
The blue along, the blue along the right, far right. The blue along Ashland Road.
Yes, sir.
Any, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Longshore. Are Mr. and Mrs. Harper here?
Mr. Harper called right before the meeting tonight and said he was unable to make it, unfortunately, but he did call.
Okay, well, thank you for that. All right, I appreciate it. So the applicant's not here, we'll open the public hearing. And this ordinance changed. Anyone wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none. Close the public hearing. All right, gentlemen.
Madam Chair, I would like to move that the parcel known as Tax Map Parcel 47-1-0-45-C be removed from the TCSD district.
I would second that ordinance to amend the Gutson County Code, as he mentioned.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Stamey, will we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
And Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Yes.
And Ms. Laskolot.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the last hearing tonight is a public hearing to consider fiscal year 2020 budget transfers and fiscal year 2021 budget amendments, and that would be Ms. Horlacker. All right, come on, guys. This is going to be easy.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Barbara Horlacker. I'm the Director of Financial Services. And we are having a public hearing tonight on these amendments because, as occurred last month, these amendments total more than 1% of our budget, and the state code, state code requires that we have a public hearing when you're going to increase your overall budget by more than 1%. Tonight is all to do with CARES Act funding. We, a quick review, we all know this, but it's one-time-use federal funds made available for the Commonwealth from the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, or CARES Act, Coronavirus Relief Fund, CRF Fund specifically. So the total allocation to Gutson County is $4,144,716 based on our population. We did receive half of that in June, and we did receive half of that in August. So we are in receipt of the total amount. So to date, we have already appropriated $2.2 million. Tonight's amendments total 1.5, almost 1.6 million, which will leave us a remaining allocation of about $327,000. The, the plan after this month, next month, I want to report back to you on what we've actually spent, because at this point, we've just been appropriating money and saying, yes, you can go ahead and do that project, but just kind of update you on how much we've actually spent. And we have received word in the last few days, we have required reporting to the state quarterly. So I can also update you on that, on how much we've reported to the state and under what categories. Because they have different categories, of course. And then in October, a month, next meeting, hopefully the final amendments, because as you recall, all this has to be done by the end of December. So I'm still getting some requests in, and I just keep reminding people, has to be done by the end of December if it qualifies for CARES Act. So that's the plan, getting, trying to get this all wrapped up by the end of December. So I will go over the amendments and in brief, and then some of the support for these requests is attached. And we also have several people here in the audience that can help answer any questions about these specific projects. So the $183,000 for the schools, we've already given the schools $400,000. They spent $217,000 of it in FY '20, and now they're just asking you to appropriate that money to their budget. We've, we've, when we gave them the $400,000, we just kind of split off our money and, and moved it over to them, and now they're just asking to put it in their budget for FY '21. And primarily for technology is the plan for that money. Also, $792,000 in school HVAC improvements. And I won't speak too much to that, other than to say that they're improvements that will update some very old systems and will add some much-needed ventilation to the schools. And Dr. Reilly is here if you have more questions on those. And then in addition to the $792,000, the schools are requesting $200,000 for additional costs for distance learning in FY '21. And then we move to the fire department. The fire department is requesting to update their emergency operations plan. They have a contract through the state with a company. And the plan is to do the four-year update of the emergency operations plan, and we'll get that done by the end of December as well. They also would like to replace all of their portable ventilators. They, their, the current ones they have are quite old and, and somewhat outdated, and this would be, $78,000 would be sufficient to replace all their portable ventilators that they carry on their ambulances. The sheriff has several requests. The first one is for $7,500 in the court's overtime budget. They've been mandated there to do a lot of extra things, obviously keep people further apart, take temperatures, screen as they come in, so there will be some overtime costs there. $120,000, this would actually go into the IT budget, but. $120,000, this would actually go into the IT budget, but the purpose of it is to replace approximately 20 of the current Tough Books that the public safety uses with a newer, obviously, model and a slightly more advanced model, has two cameras on it, could lead to a lot more distance learning, a lot more reporting in via the laptop, the Tough Book. And we decided to do it this way because we finally got ourselves to a point where we are now in a replacement cycle for the Tough Books. We had been in the past replacing all of them in one year and having to make that huge expense, and we were doing it via a lease. So now we can use some CARES money to get, to get these, but still start a replacement cycle. And so we won't have that big sum due four years from now. $200,000 for public safety CAD software upgrade. Our CAD system is quite outdated, and this would be an upgrade to the modules in the CAD system that both FiRMS and Sheriff's Office use. And again, this would enable e-summons, e-ticket, a lot more, a lot less time spent at the office doing bookings, a lot more that the deputies can do on their laptops, their Tough Books as opposed to in the office. And then we have two IT, well broadband, I should say, related type projects. The $60,000, the first one, I will let somebody get into details with that with you, but basically creating redundancy for the schools, so that currently they're dependent on a Comcast line and system, and were there to be any issues, and then they would lose all their distance teaching ability, this would provide redundancy for that. And then there has been requests to increase our hotspots and specifically to the, some of our parks locations. So we would be moving to increase the strength of some of our hotspots in, within the county and to improve them, and that would be a $50,000 project. So, and then just kind of a housekeeping tying-up kind of thing, the schools has a couple categorical transfers that don't affect the overall budget, but these were FY20 transfers from transportation to admin and fifty from, fifty-five from instruction to cafeteria. So I've very high-level presented all the different requests, and now I will let you ask questions of the specific requestees.
First of all, does anyone have questions for Ms. Horlacker?
This might be for Ms. Horlacker, but you might be able to pass it on to somebody else. Pass that hot potato. So let's say, for example, looking at the ventilators. If every department in the country is trying to get ventilators, and we order them, but they don't come in before the time it expires, would they still be available? What starts the clock? Is it that we've got them in-house and paid for? We've ordered them?
Well, the clock is actually the receipt of the goods or services. However, if you have contracted with the vendor to have delivery by December 30th and through no fault of your own, they are not delivered, then you can still use CARES money. So if you get in a situation where a supplier says, yes, I can do that, and then they find out they really can't, you are still covered.
Thank you so much.
Board, we also have Chief Ferguson here, Mr. Buzzard from IT, Sheriff Creasy, and Dr. Rayly from North Public Schools. If you have any questions for them, they are just waiting to hear a question from you. Okay, all right, okay, you might get off easy on this. All right, so seeing no question there, we'll open the public hearing on this. Anyone would like to make a comment? Okay, all right, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing. Okay, board, any further questions, comments, motions?
I would make a comment. This is a problem I never thought I would have in getting local government, where the state says, here's $4 million, go spend it. And it's really an interesting problem to have, because it kind of goes against my natural being of, well, this is taxpayer money, so we shouldn't ask for it if we don't need it, so this is an open check. However, I have to counter that with also saying, why shouldn't our Goochlin residents benefit from these funds? Because it's their taxpayer money as well. So I have worked, I think, pretty hard, and I've grilled a lot of these folks in the audience previous to this about, hey, is this, are these really a thing? And the litmus test I'm using is, if we didn't get reimbursed for it, would we be upset? Or would we try to put it in another budget cycle? And so when I look at these things, I think these are all things that we need, that our citizens are going to benefit from, it's going to be safer for our public safety offices, it's going to be better for our children, and I'm glad we're, that every time I ask Ms. Horlacker a question, she seems to always have the answers.
Anything else, board?
Kind of reminds me of the movie Brewster's Millions. You gotta spend $200 million by the 31st.
Yeah. Likewise, that much, Mr. Lumpkins.
We saw it, I think, in another piece of paper earlier this week, so Chief Ferguson, would you mind telling us a little bit about the emergency operations plan? And I'm not picking on you, I just thought y'all are here, and thank you all for coming out. I don't have a lot of questions, I think it's pretty straightforward, but this is one that crossed my desk the other day, and I just was wondering, wanted to find a little bit more out about it, but this is one I hadn't heard much about.
Thank you for asking, I appreciate the question. Madam Chair, members of the board, Eddie Ferguson, Fire Rescue Chief. So every four years, by state code, the locality has to update and revise their emergency operations plan. This is the emergency operations plan for the county of Goochlin that Fire Rescue and the Emergency Management and Services is responsible for. So the revision basically occurs every four years. It has to be approved by V E M and adopted by the Board of Supervisors. So the revision is due to be adopted by the Board of Supervisors April 2021, so we are on schedule to do that without any problems. We discovered by talking to regional partners, both in Powhatan, and we also understand Cumberland County has contracted with the same group that we've elected to go with, the Olson Group, who is also under contract from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to write templates for plans for the state of Virginia. We found out that the plan that they are proposing moves us from a emergency support function-based E O P to one that is more incident command-based, something that will be easier to explain and easier to teach, and it's scalable to size based on the emergency. If you recall, when we enacted a local declaration of emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic on March the 13th, we automatically became eligible to enter into the contract and receive the V E M contract pricing. That was one of the stipulations in order to do that. For example, the same group is writing a COOP plan and a continuity of government plan for Powhatan County, revising an E O P for Cumberland County, and maybe also a COOP plan. And so while we need some of those same plans in addition to the E O P, a revision was due in 2021, and so that logical place to start fundamentally is with the E O P. So we feel confident about this. We met with the vendor. $50,000 appeared on the slide. The way it, the contract is written with the Olson Group, it could be up to $48,000 based on the time that they spend in it, and we've had one meeting, we've had several meetings, one in person and several emails exchanged, and we actually had our first planning meeting last week. And so they are on schedule to deliver the new plan, along with the training component, which we thought was good, you know, by December. And so the present E O P is a really good document that has served us well and put us in a good position to be able to manage the current pandemic, you know, an emergency we never thought we would have to manage off of the E O P. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you. So we were going to probably, we were due to do this anyway.
Yes, sir.
Being in a state of emergency, local declared state of emergency, allowed us to get the V E D M.
Yeah, V E D M, but you need Department of Emergency Management.
Okay, V E D M's contract, we got under their contract provision, which I guess gave us a better pricing.
Gave us a better price, absolutely.
Okay, so now, so that's emergency opportunity to grab this pricing for something we need to do anyway. Now we have this, the CARES Act money that's coming in, saying, hey, we can, is that, that's right?
Yes, sir.
We're going to do this anyway, get the pricing as long as we're in a state of emergency, and then now CARES Act is coming in and helping us.
CARES Act is going to help us fund it. We would have had to have spent the money anyhow. If I could, I'll transition to the ventilators for patient care. In the C I P, I believe, in FY22, there's a placeholder for cardiac respiratory medical equipment upgrade, and so the ventilators would have come up then anyhow. And obviously, you know, with the pandemic and COVID, ventilators has been a big topic. Goochlin Fire Rescue has had ventilators on their ambulances since 2006 with their Advanced Airway Management Program, while they're in good condition, and we continue to have them inspected every year. Some are out now for a biomedical inspection. It does make sense to upgrade the ventilators, which gives us more capabilities. In addition, we just opened Shelter and Arms Hospital, and we're seeing some complex patient care transports, and we believe that a ventilator with more settings and more ways to dial it into the patient is going to be better for some of those transports. So we saw that opportunity as well, which will ultimately save the C I P a couple of years from now.
And one more thing, you said you're moving an E O P from what to what?
Yes, sir. So if you look at the present E O P, it's what's referred to as emergency support function-based, E S F-based. And so, for example, there's an E S F for firefighting, and there's one for mass care and so forth and so on, over 15 or 16 different E S Fs. And so while that's been a common practice for E O Ps to be developed that way, what's being recommended is we go to more NIMs, National Instant Management System, and more incident command system. An incident command system is modular, it's scalable to the size of the emergency, and also addresses span and control. And so you don't really use any more of it than you need for a particular situation. And that's what's being recommended, and that's what seems to be the current trend within emergency management, to comply with some guidelines from FEMA that's come down to V E M.
So this E O P will kind of shift, and I guess, once you get this in place, then it's going to kind of shift and flow down to the operations and policies and the way you operate?
Yes, sir, absolutely. It'll have annexes in the back of it that will address certain types of, for example, there could be a pandemic annex in the back of the E O P. And again, you know, our present E O P has served us well, it's a great document, it's been revised several times, but the new E O P will have a brand-new look. There'll be a new platform for more revisions to be made going forward, you know, the next four years.
One of the things when I look at this and I see sheriffs, I see sheriff's money and I see fire and rescue money, are we moving towards integrating some of these things? I think, obviously, an E O P covers cross-agencies.
Absolutely. One of the, and the E O P is certainly not just fire rescue. Again, it's a county E O P that covers all parts of emergency management and public safety and continuity of government and so forth. One of the other, not trying to steal any thunder from Sheriff Creasy, but one of the other projects that I see on the list that is a benefit to both, all public safety is the CAD system. The present CAD system that we have is, has been in place for many years, you know, over 10 years, and to be able to upgrade the software brings forward many new features that'll benefit both law enforcement and fire and rescue. And so it's a good opportunity to do that as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Peterson.
If I could, yeah, thank you. Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Horlacker. In reading through the board packet material, it's clear that a lot of these things just plain need to get done, and it's nice to have the funds to be able to do it, but reading through the schools and the air handling and filtration is just going to need to be done, it just has to be done. Airlines, hotels, everyone else is looking at this very hard, and it's something that really, really does need to be done. So I applaud these efforts, I'm glad we have the funds, and we do need to get these things done. Having said all that, I know I've talked to people that have bought a horse or a boat, and I said the cheapest part is when you spend the money upfront to buy it. We're spending about $4 million of CARES money here, my, back of my mind goes, what's the recurring cost? Okay, so you spend the $4 million. Now, I know on the air handling and the filtration, you get SEER ratings that are much more efficient, you get less maintenance and repair, so there are some offsets, but it's just, I'd be curious to know if we spend this $4 million in CARES, what kind of tail on that expense on a recurring basis would be going forward? So do you have any insight at all on that for me, Barbara?
Not specifically right this moment, but you bring up a good point in that we will incorporate that into our reporting, but we have tried to keep that in mind, like I said, with the replacement of the Tough Books. We didn't want to just go out and replace all of the Tough Books for $400,000. We wanted to start and get into a cycle of, and hopefully, things like the HVAC will make us more efficient, and there won't be too much of a tail, but we will report that back to you. But I don't, at this point, I can't say that we've created, you know, anything really obvious, it's hanging out there.
Okay, at some point, when the dust settles later on, we're going to our budget cycle pretty quickly in the spring, and all of this will come up, but as we make these decisions, you know, I like to know the totality of the decision as opposed to just what's in front of us, so. Well, thank you for that. Oh, I guess one other, and this is more of a technical or administrative, the 1.6 million that we're going to, we're being asked to consider to do the budget amendment, does that include, obviously includes the CARES money that we're appropriating, but the categorical changes, are those included in the 1.6, or does the motion need to say?
No, it's, it's 1.5 of new, or almost 1.6 of new CARES money, that doesn't count the 183 that I mentioned, because we'd already appropriated that before, the 183,000 of the 400, and it does not include the categorical or just transfers from one category to another, so they don't actually increase your overall budget.
If I may, it is often recommended that you move to approve the item as presented.
Which would include both items, so we don't need to do a separate motion for categorical versus CARES. Okay, just more of a technical question, thank you.
Madam Chair, I just had to clarify something, maybe this is just a comment, but I heard a couple places where folks said, hey, we're going to have to replace these things in a couple of years anyway, and it was in the cycle. What's instigating this is a COVID response. Like, we were responding to COVID for this, and it's not like, oh, we're going to do the respirators now because we have the money. It's, hey, no, because of COVID, we need to make sure we have the right respirators, we have the right breathing apparatus and ventilation systems. It's not, hey, these were on schedules. COVID is instigating this.
Good point.
I have one question, too. We've got money for redundancy for Goochlin Elementary and for, we're missing Randolph. Does Randolph have redundancy?
Mr. Sharp, we can talk about the $60,000 request for internet.
Yes, I mean, I'm in favor of it, I'm just.
So we, we, thank you.
Anything, anything?
You got that on record.
We continue to collaborate with Randy and his team on opportunities to expand and build the redundancies. This would be bringing internet from approximately Maiden's Road into the courthouse area that would support not only school division operations, but would also support some of the operations at the E O C as well. I believe there is some conversation taking place about maybe bringing fiber up Cardwell Road to Randolph, but that is not part of this request.
Okay, because I know there's some grants that we're going after, but if something like that didn't work out, then I would be very much in favor of finding a way to get redundancy to Randolph.
Yes, sir.
Because there's a lot of other positive things that could come from that.
To answer the question outright, I believe at Congress- To answer the question, to answer the question outright, I believe Comcast is the only service provider at Randolph right now, so no, there's no redundancy for Randolph at this time, but like, but we're, we're going after some grants and we're trying to get.
We're going to create redundancy, a bird, and, okay.
Dr. Reilly, if I may, question, and this may have been relayed to you from Barbara, because I think I asked it earlier this month when I saw your letter, but, and I know that the school board's keeping tabs on this perfectly fine, but it did jump out at me the, the difference between the price for hosted backbone and Comcast. But obviously, you have a legacy established provider, and maybe less so with hosted backbone. But when I saw this, my question was, and I haven't gotten an answer, and again, the school board's going to stay on top of it, I'm sure, but is, I mean, 1,700 versus 40, 4,100 for the same speeds, is Comcast, I mean, is there, is there a chance, I don't know whether we have a long-term commitment to Comcast, can that pricing ever come down?
Yeah, the, the beauty of this, if approved, is it allows for some competition that, that will be helpful, and ultimately, the cost that you see will be discounted based on federal E-rate as well, so we pay a percentage of that, that fee. But, yeah, I mean, allowing both Comcast and hosted backbone to have fiber in that same location will allow for competition specifically for that level of service, so I see that that would maybe help us in pricing in the future.
Yeah, I hope y'all keep an eye on it, because, I mean, you, they're really, I mean, that paragraph really struck me when, you know, when you're looking at it from a money standpoint, so.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad to see you have some options, and I know you need the redundancy now, but, and I guess that's, that's the purpose of it, right? Redundancy is the sole reason for running that right now.
Well, redundancy, and then it opens the pipe from 1 gig to 10 gigs, so allows greater speeds, and then ultimately, if something happens with one, we have the ability to flow to the other, so there are many benefits associated with this.
That's true. Hosted backbone, starting out with the 10 gigs, and when then you, when you return to on-site, then you, you have an option, I guess.
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I appreciate your support and thankful for your consideration, certainly a significant request in front of you this evening, but as has been referenced, these are certainly needed and directly related to the pandemic that we're experiencing, and thankful for your consideration.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Are we ready for a motion, gentlemen?
Madam Chair, if I could just, really quickly?
No, I said we're ready for a motion. No. Go ahead.
I move that we give Mr. Peterson some time. The sheriff was with us this evening, and he was nice enough to attend, and I wouldn't ask him to come forward if, if he wouldn't mind. I, first of all, wanted to just give him an opportunity if there was something that he wanted to say, but also had a question for him. Our job, there is $4 million here, and we've been, but our job is a tough one, because we've got competing priorities, and we've got public safety, FiRMS, Sheriff's Department, schools, and we're up here constantly trying to juggle these priorities. And I know you're out there every day trying to deal with this crisis and this pandemic. Is what's put before us today, does that address most, if not all, of your pandemic-related needs, or are there COVID-related items that didn't make this list that we should be aware of? Partly because there is some small dollars left in the kitty, partly because there may be another allocation that comes down to us, but I, I wanted to get a sense from you, if I could, as to, does this address your COVID-related needs, or are there still unmet needs?
There still is some unmet needs. For example, for, one of them is overtime for patrol. For, I mean, just this past weekend, we spent, I think it was close to $2,000 of overtime, and it was all COVID-related. We had an incident where we had nine juveniles that all testified as of COVID, and it took us pretty much most of the day into the night to handle that situation. We had to call three deputies in to assist, all getting paid overtime for it. So it does, things like that add up, but there will be some requests for overtime and a possibility of UTV that we're looking into now.
Okay. And have you had a chance through this decision-making process to make your needs known so that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure that everybody that has needs out there has a voice, and that what unmet needs are out there, stay on the table with some discussion and dialogue around those, so that to the extent there is money available, that we know what those unmet needs are.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for all you do out there on a daily basis, Sheriff.
All right, and thank y'all.
Thank you, Sheriff.
That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Okay, no other questions?
I'll reserve the rate.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Ready for a motion?
Go ahead. Madam Chair, I move that we appropriate the CARES Fund Acts as presented.
And the categorical?
Oh, I don't have that in front of me. I withdraw my motion.
Well, no, I, I think the, as, as I understand it from the attorney, that we could make a motion as presented to include both the CARES Act and the categorical refunding transfers. Is that?
That's correct. If you just move to have the item approved as presented, that would encompass both.
Okay, I will move to have the item approved as presented.
And I will second that, thank you.
Let's see how easy that was. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, there are no further questions or comments. Mr. Stamen, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
And Mr. Spoonhour?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Laskolet?
Yes. Okay, there we have it. All right. There's no other business before this board that we will adjourn as follows. Hope that everyone will be able to join us Friday, September 11th, at 9:45 a.m. for the September 11th remembrance at Company 5, and then that evening, September 11th, at 7:00 p.m. at Company 1 Fire Station. On Tuesday, September the 29th, we will have our annual legislative luncheon with our legislators that represent the county, we will be at Central High School. And then Tuesday, October 6th, we have our regular board meeting at 2:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m., and all meetings are open to the public. So thank you, everyone, we appreciate you coming out tonight and being adjourned.